One minute. The livestream has started.
Good afternoon, Bull City. We are here in City Hall Plaza in our chambers on the first floor on this Thursday, June 8th, 2023 at 1:00 PM. And we will call this meeting to order. We certainly want to thank those of you who have joined us in person today and those who are joining us via the Internet as well. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Recording in progress.
Mayor O'Neal?
I am present.
Mayor Proton Middleton has requested an excused absence and it was granted. Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson? And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, I'm now turn to our announcements for this afternoon. This is our second meeting of the day, but we didn't make any announcements this morning, I don't think so. Look to my... Okay, we'll start on this end with Councilwoman Freeman and then followed by Councilwoman Caballero.
Thank you. I did want to apologize. I missed the meeting this morning. I had another meeting and I didn't expect for you to be done in 27 minutes. So I was fully hoping to be here, but I did want to just apologize to my colleagues for not being in attendance and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to shout out all our grads all across Durham County, those promoting from kindergarten or eighth grade or fifth grade or high school graduates. It's a big time for lots of families and so just thinking about all of the amazing work that our schoolteachers and educators do in our community. And I will just shout out, we will no longer have any dragons this coming year. We will only have pirates. For those folks who know their school mascots, there you go.
Looking to my left, Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to request an excused absence for our work session on Thursday, July 20th. I'll be traveling for work and out of the area, so would like to be excused for that day. Thank you.
I can, we can entertain that motion right now. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilwoman Caballero for an excused absence for Councilwoman Johnson. All those in favor, if you would just sign by sign, aye, aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none, you are hereby excused to travel.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Holsey Hyman?
Yes, good afternoon to residents of Durham, to my colleagues. Again, I want to just reiterate the sentiments of my colleagues. Happy graduation month. As an educator, I know woo-woo. And also, again, I know we had our proclamation the other night for Pride Month. Just want to say again, happy Pride Month and let's celebrate the whole month. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson, I'm sorry, Williams, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On June 17th, I will serve as the State North Carolina Fatherhood Conference keynote speaker with Judge Vincent Roser. And I invite all to attend. This is about the spirit of fatherhood. So whether you are a father, mother, grandmother, grandfather, if you are playing that role, we invite you, but especially for the fathers. It will be at the Life Enrichment Center, 3805 Tar Heel Road in Raleigh, North Carolina, from 8:00 to 3:00. And I look forward to inviting folks out.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. First, I want to give a shout out to Chris Dreps at the Heron Rookery. I had a hike on yesterday with Chris and two other board members from the Ellabree Creek Board Association. Those birds out there are beautiful. I'm really proud that we did that and make sure that that will be there for generations to come. It's a beautiful spot right in Durham, right in the inner city of Durham. If you go down Glenstone Drive here in Durham, you will see that and have a kind of a hike back. I wouldn't suggest you do that without some of those folks who know that area well. It's kind of tucked back in the woods. So it's about less than a mile hike in, but once you get there, it's a beaver dam and it's also, you see the birds fly off and they are, there are a lot of them. I saw at least 50 or more there in the trees out there and they're enjoying their habitat. So shout out to those people who brought that to our attention and that will be there for generations to come. I did want to spend a few moments and I've asked Turner to give a few comments and I see our police chief is also here in chambers as well. We've been getting a lot of email and a lot of attention to the riders on the ATV. I know one in particular headline said that, you know, the riders came through Raleigh and they were a pack. I thought that was interesting terminology, a pack of riders of about 100 of them came through Raleigh on their way back to Durham. So it's just interesting how these things are phrased as it being a problem that originates in Durham and somehow a pack of them, which is kind of, that's a different kind of terminology there. So I take offense at that and I don't mind telling the public that I take offense at that when things like that are said. There are better ways to phrase things and there's also a split in our community as to how people are viewing that. You get people who tell us that they would rather hear them riding through the streets rather than hearing gunfire at night. You also get people who saying they're, you know, quite a nuisance. I have run into them myself, but I did want to take the time to explain where the city council itself sits in this kind of joint effort to see what we can do to not only make sure that our streets are safe and people are able to go back and forth on them, but also how then we provide an alternative for people to ride these recreational vehicles safely. So from the standpoint of the mayor and the council, we don't supervise the chief of police. That may be a shock to some who are listening, but we actually do not supervise the chief of police. She is, has within her chain of command, Bo Ferguson, who is a chief deputy, and then she has above her, above him is our city manager. So when we get calls to the mayor or to city council saying, make sure that your chief of police does something or not do something, there is protocol that we have to follow because we cannot overstep our bounds as a policymaking body. Now, we do, there are seven of us. Unfortunately, sometimes I think for our three employees, who would be the clerk, our city attorney and the city manager, they have seven bosses, all seven of us. That is not easy. Most of us have one boss. These three positions have, once they're taken, these folk have seven bosses, right? So, and they each run their own shops under our city manager. She has 29 departments that she is responsible for, for city managers, for deputy city managers. Attorney Rayburg runs a public law firm. That means she has a full staff of attorneys who carry out the business of the city on the legal end as well as paralegals, as well as other administrative staff who help her to run a public law firm, right? So she has this kind of dual role that she's also accountable to the state bar as well as being accountable to us because she supervises attorneys who have to maintain their legal credentials. Our clerk also has a full staff that she makes sure that all of the minutes and the notes and anything public that has to be public facing and notice, our clerk does that. But for those three ladies, they're not only supervising staffs, but they also have seven bosses. And there is a protocol on how we are to approach their staff. And so we're not allowed to kind of reach down and tell them how to run their shops. That is not a part of the oath that we have taken and so we have to operate in that vein. I have been operating as mayor in dealing with the issue evolving, revolving around ATVs in the matter that I think that we all can and probably all are doing, and that is trying to find the alternative place for these youngsters to ride. On the law enforcement end, our police chief has assured us, and you've seen a little bit of that, there is a concerted effort being made and put together to address the laws because they're responsible for making sure that traffic laws are obeyed, are being followed when they approach or when they are coming upon the scenes. However, their role is to gather the evidence and write the tickets if necessary. It is not up for them to prosecute. That lies outside of this building. That lies in the courthouse, in the district attorney's jurisdiction because District Attorney DeBerry has the authority as the highest law enforcement official in Durham County to prosecute traffic laws. When you think about the traffic laws that are being talked about though, they have run into two categories that I see in terms of that. One would be your non-moving violations, which are your technical registration violations, and then your moving violations, which could include impeding traffic and going up to careless and reckless and all of those other things. There are different things that happen as a result of being charged with that. When you're charged with a non-moving violation, I'm sure our attorney will tell you, you're not going to get arrested for that, for non-moving violation, right? And for your moving violations, normally you hit arrest at certain levels. And I don't know whether a lot of these impeding traffic will not rise to an arrest level. You will probably have to get into the careless and reckless arena to deal with that. But also keep in mind that the police officers have to be present and witness the behavior. They can't write a ticket without witnessing that behavior. But I'm going to turn to this other attorney and let her tell y'all the rest of it. That's just my thing. So what I have been doing, as I've been doing yesterday and a couple of meetings last week, we have been meeting with some of these young people to figure out what an alternative is. What does it look like for them to ride somewhere else? And I will say for our city manager, she has, you know, cautioned me and all of us who sit in those spaces with them to say, we want to be able to put forth something that you all will use and not come and come up with something that you will not use. On yesterday, we met with a group of business owners who are also helping us in some other arenas and they have also agreed to help us figure out how we have a facility or a place where our, those young people can ride as an alternative avenue rather than our city streets. And so we had a spirited conversation. Those conversations will continue. The next conversation will be to bring those two groups together in hopes that we will have a solution for where they can ride. And that's the position that I have taken as mayor to not getting in areas that I cannot address. So that's where I am and I'll turn it over to our attorney to kind of give you further details about what we're doing and not doing.
Well, Madam Mayor, you put your attorney hat right back on and you've covered so much ground so well. The only thing I might add for the community to be aware of is this problem is not unique to Durham and I'm sure the chief could get up here and share anecdotally about her colleagues around the state, around the country, who deal with ATV and dirt bike riders primarily during the summer months. It's a perennial event. They come out to ride and show off their tricks in the street. And you may recall that I went to a meeting last summer of large cities from around the country and was trying to pick the brains of attorneys from Philadelphia and Providence, Rhode Island and New York where they have also seen a real hard time just trying to manage this issue and nobody has any hard and fast answers. I will say that in the state of North Carolina, our state law, our state statutes cover the gamut of the behaviors that are at issue. So to the extent that residents and concerned parties are asking for code changes in the city of Durham, more robust ordinances, really the state has legislated in that space. And generally, local governments don't legislate where the state has preempted the space. Their intent is to have defined what traffic violations are throughout the state. So there's not a lot that we could do with local regulations, enforcement of local regulations. And also, the biggest problem is not necessarily identifying a charge for some of the behaviors that people are seeing, for some of the disruption that people are experiencing as motorists. The biggest problem is being able to stop these vehicles. They are highly maneuverable, they're very agile, they're small, they're not street legal, we know that, and they're able to evade and particularly when they ride in large groups like that. It's a very difficult situation from a law enforcement standpoint. And again, I would defer to the chief and her staff in terms of outlining, you know, what the safest protocols are, but I think most law enforcement agencies have concluded that it is not safe to chase these large groups of dirt bike and ATV riders. It's just not a safe situation for the officers, for the individuals on the dirt bikes and ATVs that are not street legal, and for other motorists and the motoring public. So I did notice that if folks are following the news headlines on this issue, Chapel Hill actually charged six people the other day, over the weekend. And again, these are charges that we see in Chapter 20, which is the chapter of our state statutes that governs motor vehicle activity. They've been cited for reckless driving to endanger, impeding traffic, helmet law violations, failure to maintain lane control, driving left of center, all those things that people are complaining to you all as elected officials about witnessing. People are seeing this and if they can identify the individuals and again, if law enforcement has a basis for charging someone, they can identify the individual, they know they engaged in the behavior, those charges will come, but that's the challenge. So again, the chief may have something to add to that. I don't know if you discussed that with her, but you know, we are working on this. We are trying to address it as safely as possible, but it is not a lack of intent to enforce the law. It's just the circumstances make it very difficult to take people into custody and charge them with things.
Thank you, Attorney Rayburg. If the chief wants to address it, she certainly is always welcome to talk. And she's on her way to a microphone.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. So, you know, I've been watching and reading a lot of the comments, the speculation, the armchair Monday morning quarterbacking of what our officers can and cannot do and then people making their own statements about running these folks off the road or taking other action. These dirt bikes have progressively gotten more and more aggressive with some of their, and it's not all of them because I have seen some that have operated in a safe manner, but the ones that we saw the videos on obviously were not operating in a safe manner. And so those are the operators that we at the Durham Police Department are going to be spending and I'm pulling people from investigating some violent crimes to do this. So understand Durham, I am pulling officers to investigate, that are investigating violent crimes in order to also divide their time to function in a multi-jurisdictional task force with other law enforcement agencies. There is a video that is surfaced of us assisting a highway patrol trooper that was trying to get a bicyclist or a motorcyclist stopped and that video has been circulating around. At the end of the day, we cannot chase them, we won't chase them because not only are we, we are not going to endanger the general motoring public's life, but we are not going to endanger the lives of these bikers and ATVers. We are not going to do that. The end is not worth the means. But we are looking at other actions that people, that I'm not going to get into here. We have other ways in which to address the problem. It will not be addressed overnight nor immediately, but we are going to be dividing our resources in which to, to at least be able to address the means by which they are behaving in this manner. The incident that happened this past weekend, I had, there were about 150 to 200 bikes that were at a gas station over near Jordan High School and that took about nine or 10 police cars to stop and deal with two of them. There were officers that were running on foot to try and get these folks off of their motorcycles. One officer was hurt. There was damage to patrol vehicles. So we are doing the very level best that we can, but I will ask the public that the speculation, the really aggressive attitudes being demonstrated by some of our community members, I understand that people are upset, but you're making the problem worse and my officers have to read these comments. And comments of you saying that they are cowards does nothing to help support these officers. My officers are the bravest people you will ever meet and I will stand beside them every single day, every time. Leave them alone and let them do their jobs.
Thank you, Chief. All of us have run into these young people, pulled to the side, let them go and call 911 and go on with your day. And let these officers do their job. Thank you. We now turn to our priority items by our city manager.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the Durham City Council. I do have a few priority items for you this afternoon. Agenda item number 19, which is Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Budget ordinance attachment number five was revised to reflect a transfer from the general fund to the dedicated housing fund. The motion was revised to reflect the ordinance number change from 16093 to 16150. Agenda item number 42, Partners for Reentry Opportunities in Workforce Development, Proud Grant Contract Agreement, Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc., a supplemental item was added. And agenda item number 43, Contract Amendment Number Three for Fiscal Year 2023-24 Training to Work Reentry with Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc., is also a supplemental item that has been added. That is all I have for you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Page. You are now hearing her priority items. May I have a motion for their approval? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilwoman Caballero. All those in favor, if you would sign by sign, aye, aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none, the ayes have it and the motion passes unanimously. I now recognize our city attorney for any priority items she may have.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be with you today. The city attorney's office has no priority items. However, if I might have a point of personal privilege?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce our summer law clerks for the summer. If they would please stand, we have Samuel Graber-Hahn, who is a rising 3L at Duke University School of Law, Maeva C. Hassani, who's a rising 2L at North Carolina Central University School of Law, and Mallory Vares, who's a rising 3L at UNC School of Law. They will be doing work all summer that will really impact the work of the council, so I'm excited to have them join us for the summer and we welcome them.
Welcome. Did you say you had something? City Clerk Schreiber for your priority items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome, Mayor and council members. The city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to our second order of business, which is to read our entire agenda. Today, we'll start off with the administrative consent items and then move to the department of items, presentations, et cetera. Item number one is the Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee appointment. Number two, the Durham Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission appointment. Three, the Recreation Advisory Commission appointment. Item four, the Housing Appeals Board Mayor Appointment. Item five, the Durham Planning Commission Appointment. Item six is the Durham Cultural Advisory Board Appointment. Appointment. Item seven, the Approval of City Council Minutes. Number eight, Durham Convention Center Authority Appointment. Nine, the Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee Appointment. Ten, the Human Relations Commission Appointment. Eleven, the Housing Appeals Board Appointment. Twelve, the Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board Appointments. Number thirteen, the External Auditor Contract Modification. Fourteen, Go Durham Bus Safety Performance Audit, May 22, May 2023, I'm sorry. Item fifteen is the Fiscal Year 2023 to '24 Budget and 2024-29 Capital Improvement Plan Ordinance, Other Related Ordinances, and FY 2024 through '26 Strategic Plan. And that is a lot of information that goes along with that. Now, and let's see, I think I probably need to read, do I need to read each one, Madam Attorney?
No.
Okay.
Item fifteen.
For item fifteen, just want to check and make sure. All right. Item sixteen is a presentation and ordinance to establish standards for trespass from city property. Item seventeen is a discussion of council procedural issues of censure and refusal. Item eighteen is the American Rescue Plan Act Project, ARPA, A.R.P.A. Project for Youth by Youth, F.Y., B.Y. And I guess I need to pull my own item, which was item seventeen. Item eighteen is the American Rescue Plan Act Opera, Project for Youth by Youth, F.Y., B.Y. I just read that. Item nineteen is the Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Item twenty is the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Agreement with Durham County to Support Joint Affordable Housing Projects. Twenty-one, Contract with Code Studio for the Comprehensive Rewrite of the Unified Development Ordinance. Item twenty-two, the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Funds, LDG Multifamily Development, LLC Loan Commitment Letter for Sankofa Landing. Item twenty-three, Item twenty-three, contract with the Central Piedmont Community Action for the Provision of Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Services. Item twenty-four, the Housing Authority of the City of Durham Relocation Grant for the Durham Housing Authority, DHA Downtown Development Plan, DDMP. Item twenty-five is the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Funds, Mosaic Development Group, Inc., Loan Commitment, 902 Briggs Avenue Project. Madam Mayor, I apologize, I need to pull the item number nineteen. Item nineteen, thank you. And that was the Carver Street Supportive Housing Acquisition Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Okay. Number twenty-six, the contract with corporate F A C T S, FACS, Inc., for technical assistance on an affordable housing project. Item twenty-seven is the amendment to extend term of agreement with Durham County EMS for EMTs on HEART teams, H E A R T teams. Item twenty-eight is the agreement with Strategic Energy Innovations for Climate Corps Fellowship. Number twenty-nine, former wheel skating center outfit design contract amendment with D T W Architects and Planners, L, Limited. Madam Mayor, I need to pull that item. Item thirty is the interlocal agreement with Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, Doing Business As, Discover Durham, to add the Durham Convention Center Study, Convention Center Study to the Destination Master Plan. Thirty-one, the Second Amendment to Lease with Duke University and Duke University Health System, Inc., for the Emergency Communications 911 Backup Center. Item thirty-two is the contract for Durham Workforce Development Board, W, D W D B Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, W I O A Youth Program, Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc. Item thirty-three is the Fiscal Year 2023 to '24 Agreement to Fund Economic Development Programs and Services Operated by Downtown Durham, Inc., Using City of Durham Funds. Item thirty-four is the Contract Amendment Number Two for F Y 2023-24 City Services and Programs for the Downtown Durham Municipal Service District with Downtown Durham, Inc. Number thirty-five is the contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc., for Replacement Tasers. Item thirty-six, supplemental agreement for On Call Professional Services for Durham Freeway Study. Thirty-seven, the Award of Bid Term Purchase Contract for Bulk Sodium Hypochlorite to Altrin Solutions, LLC. Item thirty-eight is a resolution to accept the offer of American Rescue Plan funding for the Western Intake Partnership Projects. Our presentations, item thirty-nine, the Durham Sports Commission Multi-Sport Complex Presentation, which is 45-minute presentation. Our public hearings, item forty is zoning map change, RP, residential studio apartments. Our supplemental items, forty-one, a resolution to honor the late Conan T. Morgan, lifelong STEM advocate. Item forty-two is Partners for Reentry Opportunities in Workforce Development, Proud, P R O W D, Grant Contract Agreement, the Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc. And item forty-three is the Contract Amendment Number Three for F Y 2023 to '24 Training to Work Reentry with Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc. That will conclude the reading of our agenda. Madam Clerk, I have items seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-nine that have been pulled. Is that what you have? All right. Okay. All right, we will now turn to our citizen matters at this time. Here with us in chambers today, signed up, there may be others here who have not signed up, would want to speak as well. Ms., Christian Candeloro would be first, and John Tate Dunston. If you would please come to the podium, you have three minutes each. Thank you. If you would first say your name, and then you may have your three minutes.
Sure. Good afternoon to the council. My name is Christian Candeloro. I am a third-year firefighter in Durham. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I first want to say that I am grateful for the amount of time and discussion that the council has spent on our issue. I hope I speak for my colleagues when I say I believe in the desire of this council to fix the issues of pay in the Durham Fire Department, and I'm hopeful for the future. But in the last two weeks alone, I've received three calls from former Durham firefighters asking me if I have interest in leaving and joining their department. I chose Durham three years ago, and I have to grapple with whether I made the right decision. What you have right now in Durham is a bleed in the fire department. We are losing people. I also know that there are many firefighters just like me that are watching this budget process with great interest. You have an opportunity before June 20th to make a difference in that bleed. If you wait until the comprehensive pay study is done to make any progress towards fixing these issues, many of the firefighters you are trying to help won't be here to see the changes. Approximately 61 individuals will depart prior to the next budget cycle. Every day that pay study is, until that pay study is concluded, I will ask myself if staying in Durham is fair to my family. How many times over that span will I have to tell my wife I'm turning down other offers, offers that would better support our family, because I have hope in this council? Hope does not put food on my table, pay my mortgage, or make up for the time spent away from them. I understand the complexities this process brings. I understand your desire to serve your city in the best possible way. We have the same desire. I understand that everything won't be fixed overnight. I've sat here through several council meetings and heard you say, each and every one of you say that you support us. We were told that you don't have to make it any more clear, and that you would make it happen. But if you vote for the budget as it's currently constructed right now, people are going to leave. Right now, you have an opportunity to keep firefighters. You have an opportunity to make a meaningful change in the future of this department by keeping our valuable employees the future leaders of this department. I ask that you take a step in that direction so that we can, so that together, we can continue working towards building out a better department and a better city in the coming years. If action is not taken right now, we will not have the experienced personnel to support the great city that Durham is. Please, vote to amend the budget. Give our firefighters faith in this process so we can continue to support the city the way we all want to see it supported. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dunston, if you would state your full name, and you have your three minutes.
Yes, I'm John Tate Dunston. I would like to thank everyone this evening, Mayor O'Neill, City Council, and our people in the community, and our brothers and sisters on the police department and fire department. I'm here to speak on the budget proposal for our fire department, and I'm here to say that this 2%, you're giving our fire department and our police and them a bad deal. I wouldn't even accept that deal, because I'm speaking on behalf of security companies and agencies that employ fire departments and police officers part-time, because they cannot make the ends meet. It brought me to realize that our fire department and our police officers at this budget will be at the same poverty level as most of the citizens are. They cannot even afford the mortgages. The proposal you gave, 2% and a $300 bonus, that $300 bonus won't even cover groceries. That $300 will only cover probably their insurance. That 300 is probably a subscription. But you got to realize that these firefighters and these police officers have kids that are in college. They have families they have to support. We also have to think about their mental time they have to have down with their families. And meanwhile, when they should be resting and knowing that us as a community should have their back 100%, 2%, I'm going to tell you straight like this, okay? If I get a security contract, every 90 days, I get a 2% pay increase. A bonus at the end of six months to a year, I've never seen a bonus under $300. Most of my bonuses are 1,000 and more. But then I have to sit there and budget, and I understand when these brothers have to sit there and wake up every day. I see them in our community. I see the fire department, first responders responding to the shootings, responding to the elderly, they're making their time. They're the ones that sit there and be the ones that are the most comfort in our community. Our police officers are doing the best they can, but they need a pay increase, because we have to be a competitive-based community, because I don't blame them if they're going to leave. I don't blame them. They have to survive. And right now, I talked to a couple of police officers, I talked to a couple of firefighters the other night, and they laughed at that deal, and they said that straight up. Y'all are going to lose firefighters, and you're going to lose police officers. So that means that we have to uproot for our safety and our well-being, and that we have to follow our firefighters and police officers to the communities that's going to give them their pay, give them their respect. It all starts with city council. It all starts with the budget, just like you said about y'all have bosses, then we're tired of speaking to the employees, it's time for us to start speaking to your bosses. So do us a favor, get your bosses in here so we can speak to them directly and let them know. And on that end, ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful and safe weekend.
I do note that we have Ms. Jackie Waxstaff, who's, who's signed up for, to speak online, but she's here in person, so I'm going to ask her to come now to speak, and any other persons who would like to speak, who have not signed up that are here, present now, after her.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. I came down in person because, you know, we have these issues about when we sign up to speak online, if we don't get it in at a certain time, we may not be able to speak. So I just wanted to make sure, because you got some important stuff. But under this citizen matter, I want to speak about the first responders. On Monday, Councilman Williams made a statement to the public that it was more complicated about giving y'all that raise than we, the public, understood, because we're a little ignorant to what they do, even though some of us have been up there before. So I just wanted to come down here and let you know that, just like you gave yourself $10,000 a raise in 30 days, it wasn't complicated. Give these people the same respect, the same raise, the same thing. And also, you know, I'm hoping that none of you will have to call them for anything, because unlike them, it couldn't be me. If you called and I was working for them, knowing how you're doing me, I might be a little slow on getting up off the bathroom stall, I might be a little slow putting on my uniform, might be a little slow, and that might have an effect on how, how your situation turns out. But this council has to do better. This vote was taken in 2021. Some of you weren't even here, but I know some of you were, and you have done nothing. We are losing these brave people, and this is not, this is only going to hurt Durham. And also, just a suggestion for the bike riders on the highway. And when I heard the mayor speaking, it made me reflect that maybe y'all watching my Facebook posts, because I said, there's a way to solve this. Just like the quickness that they made for the skateboards, when those skateboarders were skating all over Durham, all over your property, they created a whole park, a whole park down there. Didn't take but a minute. Let's look at some property and create a biker park. Invest in doing some events out there that can bring these guys in, and they can be in competition, they can get prizes, trophies. There's a lot of things you can do, but we can't just talk about them being out there. Because I ran into them Sunday, over by South Point, and I had to sit there and wait, but it is what it is. But let's give them a park, the same way we did the skateboard park. That's all I'm going to say right now.
I turn now to our internet citizens who would like to speak. As a citizen matter, we have Mary Molina signed up. Ms. Molina, if you are online, if you would please let me know, and you will have three minutes.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Molina is not online.
Do we have any other hands raised to speak at the citizens, on citizens matters?
No, there are no other hands.
All right. Thank you. We now turn to review our, our pulled item, and we will start with items 17, which is an item that I requested to be on our agenda for discussion of council procedure issues of censure and recusal. And we do have Ms. Waxstaff, you have signed up to speak to that item along with Ms. Mary Molina. So if you will come first, Ms. Waxstaff, and then Ms. Molina, if she joins us, she can
I signed up for this item because this is near, and it's very near to my heart. You have a statement that's always on this form right here about decorum and how people, how the public is supposed to act, and how are they supposed to follow these rules? And I can say today that there are members of this council that make this be, this is just a shame. We shouldn't even have this on here, because the rules that you set for the public, you don't follow yourself. When we start talking about censorship and conflicts of interest and recusal, I'm just going to name you a few times that there were some council members that needed to recuse themselves from some votes up here. I'm going to start off with Councilman Williams. You just recently voted on the social district. Unfortunately, that social district caused you to make money, because you were opening a business in the social district zone area. I was sitting here, you never recuse yourself. Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson, you had your mother-in-law serving on the participatory budgeting committee. She was the chair at one time, living in your house, giving away money, giving away the taxpayers' money. I never saw you recuse yourself from that vote. Councilwoman Cabiera, just recently, you moved from your residence to another property on the same street, three blocks down, that belongs to Michelle Owens. And just in case y'all don't know who she is, she's the diaper bank lady that received $50,000 from the PPP, PP, the participatory budgeting money. Makes you wonder about how they're doing business. And also, Councilwoman Johnson voted on, in 2021, on changing the ordinance for the accessory dwellings. At the same time, she was intending to build an accessory dwelling where she makes money off of. It is clear in the ordinance, in the charter of this council, that you are not supposed to vote on things that you can financially benefit from, or your spouses, or your whoever. All of y'all are doing this. All of you are doing this. So all of you have conflicts, you don't recuse yourself. We sit here time and time again, you admonish the public when they come up here and they try to discuss these things with y'all. Y'all are doing so many wrongs, but y'all are the ones that make the decision, the policymakers. You're supposed to be the ones that have all of the knowledge, as you said, Councilman Williams, Monday night. We are ignorant to what y'all do. Well, I'm not, because I understand how this works, and this needs to be dealt with, all these conflicts, all of y'all have them.
For a point of clarification, I understand from the text messages from our clerk that there are people here to sign, who have signed up to speak on 15B as well. So as soon as we finish this, we will come back to 15 and 15B. Is that what we're doing?
Madam Mayor, the individual spoke under citizens matters. I think we're fine.
Okay, so I can ignore that?
I believe so. Can she?
Okay, all right, thank you. She sent this text. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anybody this time. Okay, all right. So is Ms. Molina present on the internet? Okay, she's signed up for 15 as well. Item what? You want to pull the item 15B? We will have to come back to that one when we finish this one. Then it'll be 15B, 19, and 29. All right. The reason why that I have placed this on is that we have had three outstanding procedure matters to come before this council where our procedures manual does not exactly address how we are to deal with those matters. And they pretty much remain outstanding. It's also doing conversations with our city attorney, who has indicated that we have not had a review of our procedures since 2012, I believe. We've had some modifications, but not an overall comprehensive review. I'll let you speak to what.
Madam Mayor, I don't know that the council procedures have ever been comprehensively reviewed and rewritten. The list of dates that appear on the front of the council procedures are amendments. And most of those amendments are discrete, like it's a particular paragraph or provision. It's not a rewrite of the entire procedural rules.
Thank you. So I had asked a couple of months ago for our procedures committee, which is chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, also co-chaired by Councilwoman Johnson. And Councilwoman Jose Hyman has also asked to sit at that table to ask, to have a review. But I wanted to make sure that we have certain things on the record so that the public would not think that we have ignored things that have come up, but sort of kind of are still out there. There are two outstanding, I believe, censure requests. Our essential policies, as I have read them, only contemplate being censured for behavior that happens here on the dais. And then there's a procedure for that. Well, the request that we've had for censure, one concerns Councilwoman Jose Hyman and that situation. The other has also been, which is behavior that allegedly occurred outside of this dais. The second was a request by the public to have some censure process for a situation involving Councilman Williams. And so those two procedure, those two requests pretty much are still out there because there is really no procedure in our procedures that we have that address those particular circumstances. So I'm, for one, asking that we, that that committee formally take those, those censure, those two censure things that are still out there and develop procedures that can be addressed when these situations come up. The third was a request from the public to recuse, I want to say, recuse Councilwoman Caballero on a development issue that has not come before the council. But once again, there is nothing in our procedures as outlined that allows the council to address those, those recusal requests that come from the public. And so we need to develop some procedures to handle recusal matters as well. I do have one other issue that I think we've had a lot of conversations and they continue to come up and up and up about the behavior of council, as you've heard now, that I think that we also need to address. There has also been a lot of talk about fraternization with city council officials and city employees. There's also an issue revolving when, kind of the opposite of the situation with Councilwoman Jose Hyman, where we, there are clear processes in my mind, to a certain degree, about what happens, what should happen, a process for when a councilperson is accused of receiving a benefit or asking for a financial benefit from a person or persons who appear before the council seeking a vote. However, there's no opposite of that. Whereas where a councilperson has within their own financial wherewithal, either from employment or from their own wealth, where they give monies or financial incentives to people who come before the council. And then those persons who are part of those organizations come before the council and ask the council or lobby the council for votes. So it's almost a mirror image of that. And I think that has caused a lot of talk in our community. And for me, as a former judge, perception is everything. And if you don't have clear procedures that kind of outline how you deal with these situations, you get into this kind of, oh, they're doing this, or they're doing that. And you don't have a way to address those situations in a manner that is both equitable and fair for the people who are being talked about as well as our interactions with the constituencies that have to come before us. So I would also lay those two issues at our, with our subcommittee to ask them to address. Those are my reasons for putting this forth because I want to make sure that we are really clear, to the extent that we can be, about our interactions with each other on this dais, as well as our interaction with the public, and that we do have governing ethical considerations that we need to consider as far as perception. People always want to talk about corrupt politicians. I do not have a desire for my name to be in that vein of being a corrupt politician. And I know my colleagues share that same feeling. So in order to deal with that, we must be, come forth with these things that are being said and have a process to address that. And I'll leave, now turn it over to my colleagues for further comments. Councilwoman Caballero first, and Councilwoman Freeman after that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that the city attorney, I feel like a week or two ago, said that the city attorney's office was willing to do, I think, a deeper read of our procedures and work with the procedures committee. I don't sit on the procedures committee, so I just look forward to the conversation, when and how it unfolds. Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you just bringing it forward and making sure that it doesn't fall to the wayside because I think that this has been, in part and parcel, an issue that created the kind of havoc that we had in the last three months and is yet to be resolved. I think it's important to acknowledge that there should be due process around whatever the procedures are. And the fact that there are missing procedures highlights why there's such a gray area around some of it. I, I think, even in part, my behavior on council and having an outburst with another colleague off the dais is also reason to have those type of procedures and response in place. Without them, you're just kind of guided by whatever you think or however you feel. And I don't think that the city attorney can tell her bosses how to respond. I don't think that that's the appropriate way to handle this. I do think that it's something either the subcommittee or an external party should take part in, which is why it was so frustrating when it was occurring for Councilmember Jose Hyman. Because I know good and well that there should be some type of due process procedure in place to address any allegation that is brought forward. And whether or not it's criminal or what have you, you know, is not the question. That's not what we're trying to figure out. We're trying to figure out what it looks like to say that someone's doing something that's inappropriate and then to have a response. And so I can appreciate you saying, you know, it's not to point fingers. I know that that's what happens from the community perspective. But there has to be accountability. And the only way, in my mind, as a nonprofit administrator that I know, to create that accountability is with actual guidelines. And they do not exist in the current format of our council procedures for off the dais. There is too many rumors. There's too many accusations flying around about any and all of us. And there's no way to address it without something in place. And I don't know what that looks like. But I do know that it's not something the city attorney's office is going to be able to address. So, thank you.
Council, Councilwoman Jose Hyman.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up because that has been in the limbo, because one of them relate to me, which has been a major turmoil in my life. And again, not getting due process. But I also think that, and which is why earlier in our budget meeting, I asked for maybe some money to have an external contractor to come and look at the policy and procedures. While we have a policy and procedure committee, that same policy and procedure committee did not follow the guidelines when the sanction was brought forth before me. So I feel kind of uneasy about that. It's why I want to join that committee also. But I definitely feel uneasy because, as I said earlier, and I said it a couple of weeks ago, I don't want this to happen to anybody else. And so now we have an issue with recusal. We have an issue with another sanction on another council member. And I don't want them to go through the same things that I've been through in the last three months. The other thing is, I think we need to also have policies and procedures on just basic decorum and professionalism on this council. One of the first things that I said when I got appointed in May, when I had witnessed a back-and-forth argument between Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Caballero, is that we have to learn how to disagree but agree in professionalism. And since I have been on this particular council, since being appointed, and I'm going to say it publicly, I feel I have been bullied. I feel that I have been bullied. I feel that I have not been respected. And I feel that the way some people speak to each other is inappropriate. The other night, as I talked about facial expressions, I talked about when people vote a certain way, the way people are looked and stared at. I talked about just the inappropriate behavior that we have. We are people who are really serving, supposed to be serving, for the residents of this community. And while I was not elected, I was appointed. But I still take this job the same seriously that I take my professional career. And I do also feel that just personal, not, excuse me, personal, but just professional behavior is not shown on the dais with each other or when people come to speak. And I've said that before, and I've been bullied about saying that. So I still, still do not feel that the procedure committee, especially the committee that actually put that out sanction about me, which was totally inappropriate because it didn't follow any guidelines. And now I have other council members that are going to have to deal with similar things. It's inappropriate. And so I still don't feel comfortable with it just landing on the city attorney's office. And I'm asking again that we have an outside consultant to work on this.
Councilwoman Freeman.
So I just wanted to ask, what would be the procedure to kind of figure out what an outside resource would look like lining that up? Is that something that would come from the dais? Like, we need to make a decision? Is there need to be a vote on something like that? And I guess trying to figure out if there's a way to move forward so that we actually do put something in place. Because, I mean, it's just going to keep lingering. And this is from March. We're now in June.
Well, my always go-tos is the Institute of Government. They are state-paid lawyers. There's a whole passel of lawyers. I've used them for the last 30 years. They normally have within their, within their curriculum a number of experts who can speak on any manner of governmental issues. That's what they are, the Institute of Government. I feel confident that if we, and I think it's a good, it's a good test for this council, whether, how well you judge yourself and your behavior and your demeanor and your ethical obligations to uphold what you do as a public official, that you, there's a part of governing yourself. So I think that for me, I'm comfortable with starting, with, starting with the white paper from our attorney. And then also, and she has her law staff. We have some bright, young minds who are, don't have the taint of us working in her office this summer as interns. And maybe she will involve some of them in this process. But definitely, if she starts with that, we also have the option of asking the Institute of Government. That's what they do. That's where they're there. We use them as judges. We use them as council folk. That's what they're there for. And so I feel confident that before we have to expend any monies that we exhaust, the professionals that we have that are available. And we can, they are easy to reach out to. We can ask, we can ask our attorney to contact them and let them know, you know, becoming, it would be an inclusive process. She knows those people. She's worked with those people. So other issues involved in the council. So as one voice, I do feel confident, having worked with them over the years, that they have a significant amount of expertise in this area that we could rely on initially to get us through the points. I just think that we have to be very clear with them about what they're, what we're expecting them to do. They don't give you really legal advice. They kind of tell you the lay of the land out there and kind of give you your options. So we have to be really clear. But I'm used to working with them. Attorney Rayburg is really used to working with them. I just want to make sure today, though, that we leave here with the issues for the committee to address so that they understand their charge and how we are to, the expectations. I hope that once we come back from the break, they will have had time to meet and give us a preliminary read of where they're heading.
That seems amenable.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the hardest things about sitting on this dais is you have to sit here quiet and listen to people coming here and say just about anything, whether it's true or not. And mostly, most of it is opinionated. I think if we are, if we, if we're talking about censure requests from the public, then I think that we might be up here a lot, pretty much all day. I just want to govern. I just want to govern. We have a lot of complex issues. And right now, this just seems like a lot of drama. And in order to govern, it's going to take leadership. And that's on us. We have folks that are sitting here worried about their pay and their livelihood. And we're talking about who said, he said, she said. So I, too, look forward to the procedures committee taking up all of these issues. I have full faith in our attorney's office. That's what we pay them for. That's what the community pays them for. I have full faith in our procedures committee. I have full faith in the school of government. And we have a lot of complex issues in the city that we need to take care of. A lot. But I can tell you one thing for sure. I wasn't elected to tiptoe around feelings. I wasn't elected to tiptoe around what someone may think of me. The worst thing you can be sitting on this dais is hungry and thirsty. So I didn't come here that way. I came here full. This was a choice. I never needed this position. I chose to serve. So therefore, I have the ability to make the most objective decisions. And I hope that we will continue to bring the best and brightest and the most, the bravest and the most courageous in our community. Whether you're starting a business, whether you're running businesses, whether you're leading organizations and nonprofits, pertaining to the comment that was made earlier. I hope that those out there that are working their butts off for everything they can do to make a living would also. would also choose to run for office one day. I do. I just want to govern, and that's going to take leadership, and that's what we're supposed to be up here doing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hosea Hyman.
Thank you, I don't want to belittle the point, and I do also have the same faith in our city attorney's office. However, with the situation pertaining to me, we had those policies and procedures, and they were not followed. And so that's why it's concerning to me that we just leave it, and I understand we're saying we're going to also reach out to UNC's government to help us in this process. But I, I guess that's why I keep asking for outside entity. Because again, we did have our city attorney's office that kind of guided the process, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I might be misspeaking, because no one actually said anything to me about the process. It was just, there's a sanction, so I might be misspeaking. But that, that was a guidance from the city's attorney's office to even put that sanction out, and it did not follow the procedure of what a sanction is. So that's why it's concerning to me about that. And I might be misspeaking because again, it was never even brought to my attention. I just know that it was a sanction out after there was discussion, before anybody even asked me anything, so.
All right, and for the record, I'm not speaking directly to you. A sanction was just stated about me that I didn't even really know about. So I'm speaking very generally, and let's refer to the Procedures Committee, let's refer to whatever process and just move forward. So I, I don't want my comments to think that they're directly at any of you all, it's just really general.
Councilwoman Freeman.
I would just want to ask that we have a timeline, because to Councilmember Williams' point, I think that this does impact folks' livelihood. I do know that there's been resignations, there's been a lot of phone calls, a lot of threats made, and it is impacting folks. And so, it may not be impacting you in the same way that it's impacting others, but it is impacting folks. And I don't think that that should be left to just whenever, because I mean, again, this was March, it is now June.
I have asked Attorney Rayburg if she would do a draft, a white paper for the subcommittee before the, you know, during the break, so that they have an opportunity to review, and like I said, hopefully to meet. So I would ask that they have some type of report back to us sometime in late August or our first meeting in September. Let's just put that, that they have some type of report back to us back then. I, I do take all of these seriously because a, a body without laws and to govern them is a lawless body. And we are, have to have guidelines, just as we ask our employees and everybody else to have guidelines on behaviors, otherwise you get into this he said, she said, that eliminates that. When you have a process that is clear on how you deal with situations, and that's ever-evolving, you know, because times change, people change, that's why they meet every year in the legislature, that's why we meet here. You have to evolve with laws. So, it is very clear to me, when I read those sanctions, those requests from various people, that we didn't have the tools to close those gaps, and that is not good. It's a simple process of having procedures that we can go to and adjust as needed. But right now, we have, in some instances, no procedures at all. And that's not good for any body that has this type of power and perceived power, that they, they, they don't, they don't have any, any way to govern that behavior, or their own behavior. Councilman.
Just one addition, I know that we do have disclosure statements, and maybe that is also included in this kind of, in this conversation. Just making sure that the disclosures are around, I think we disclose our jobs, our connected, like, organizations, and like where we own property. It may need to extend to like whom you're connected to as well. Like in the organization, I'm connected to Mr. Antoine Freeman, who's my husband, who works on a contract for Echo Flow, which is now Republic, and he's at the landfill. But there's no place to kind of tell you that, and so folks might hear it and think there's something there. And so I think it's important to make sure that our disclosure forms are updated as well, because there's a lot of nuances around how our relationships work with other people that might work for the organization or within the organization. And I feel like when there's a disclosure, it kind of lessens that burden or lessens that concern around what the perception might be.
You know, the discussion before we move on to the next pooled item.
I would say just again, with the disclosure form, just definitely maybe to highlight any, I guess, issues that might appear that you are becoming or getting any kind of public gain from you being a member of city council. For example, maybe being the leader of a, a PAC or, or, or being involved with some, a, a, a committee that then, then comes up and presents in front of us, and then also maybe endorses a candidate. But you might be in that particular, you might be the head of that PAC, or you might be the head of that organization. These are things that I'm just learning, right? And so, I have not been able to benefit, and I don't want to benefit from anything from this position. I have not benefited in one way, if anything, I've lost things because I can't do certain things that I used to do because I have a tension to this particular job. And I've lost things because of other things too, because being on this, on this, on this council. So I think that needs to be added also.
All right, let us move on to our next pooled item, which is, sorry, back to item 15 first. Thank you, thank you, City Manager. And I believe that was pooled by Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and, and for the reminder, I, I, I pulled, I pulled the item because it is kind of a concern of mine that if we just move forward, that folks will get the assumption that all of us are on the same page about this item, and I'm not. I want to be clear in stating, I think we should move forward with a raise for all of the staff, even if it is the one step. And I don't want it to just appear as if I'm, I'm okay with this 2% as it's set. And so if we need to increase taxes, if we need to pull funds from other places, I want to make it very clear to the city manager, and to staff, and to the fire department, and all of the staff in the community, who knows that misstep. I, I got a text message of a pay stub, and on the pay stub, I could see very clearly that it says paid per hour rate is $15.49, and that it's not a livable wage. And so I want to be very clear that it's not acceptable. I don't, I don't want to move forward with that. And so, rather than waiting till Monday night, I, I just want to say that upfront. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I, well, I've said it early in the budget meeting, I think I've been seeing it even when we were talking about pre-budget. I think I was one of the first people to bring it up. I definitely also would like to make sure that we get our fire people to the steps that they need to go to. I would love to be able to see everybody get to that point, but that's what I'd, I'd like to see also. And I'd like, and if we have to, again, sentiments of my Councilmember Freeman, if we have to raise taxes, not that I want to do that, but we, I, I want to be able to call 911, call the fire department if I'm having a fire, call the police department, and be able to feel like I'm going to have somebody come to that door. And as I shared before, why it's very dear to my heart is because my husband would not be sitting here, well, he's not sitting here, would not be here if it was not for a fire department coming to my house, first one on the, on the scene, and getting them people there to shock his heart back. So, when I recently had a situation where someone came in and broke into my cars, I had to call the police department. So, we need to do better.
Councilman Williams.
Let me see if I can ask this the right way. First of all, let me reiterate my comments from earlier as well, this is not a binary of who's supporting, who doesn't support. I, I think everyone on the council supports not only our firefighters, but our entire staff. And I just want to make sure we're careful, careful about how we're moving about this, and I think it's a matter of timing. During the pandemic, no one got a step. And I'm going to ask that, Madam Manager, you step in and correct me, because this is very complex, and I'm still trying to figure it all out. But no one got a step. But also, as I've said before, not all staff are created equal. Not, you know, not everybody's jumping through houses that are on fire or, or running toward gunfire when others are running away. But at the same time, our first responders were one, the only ones to get a, get a bonus, I believe, one time. And now we're trying to address that, not only for our first responders again, but the entire city staff, the entire enterprise. And we've budgeted for a step plan, and that, I'm sorry, we've budgeted for a pay study. The pay study, while it may have its complications, it will give us, it will basically inform us on how to make the best data-informed decision to move forward. And I think that's how we can be very fiscally responsible. I don't want this conversation to sound like there has not been anything, like the, the ethics conversation as if we don't have procedures in place. There are some procedures in place that address some of these things. I agree with Councilmember Freeman that we need to have a little more detail, so we don't have to deal with the hearsay stuff. But regarding this pay situation, Madam Manager, when is the pay study coming about?
So included in the proposed budget, the administration's proposed budget is, is a dollar figure that would allow us to put a request for proposal out as soon as possible. I've spoken to the Human Resources Director today, we expect to get the request for proposal for consultant and put the proposal request out in July. So, you know, that, we do do a little pre-work when we have a proposed budget, but you know, we don't make the assumption that everything in a proposed budget is going to be in the final budget. So, while we have started to do, you know, some pre-work for that request, we will finalize it as soon as the budget is adopted and have that request, you know, out, advertised for a consultant to come in and help us do that work, and that will be in July. You know, certainly I don't want to sit here and say, you know, it's going to be a month, or six months, or 12 months, because, you know, we're going to be working with a consultant. But what I can say is, we are going to look with current conditions that we have at our, our pay plans, our classifications that all of our employees work in, what the market value of those jobs would be in current dollars. And there always comes with that an estimate of the cost. And, you know, we, we have to have any costs that we apply to anything that we have approved by the city council. All of the previous pay studies that we've done and have been recommendations, we bring those recommendations to council for approval to implement, to implement those, those plans. We would be doing the same thing here. I do not want anyone, the, the employees, the, the residents, to think it is going to be something that happens in a few weeks. That is not going to happen. That would be too quick, and it would not be, it would not end in the results that we are expecting it to end in. We don't do these things just to do them. We do them so that we can have the information that we need to continue to provide market pay for our employees. Our employees are important to this organization, they're important to the community that we serve. We have a very large organization, and we serve a lot of residents. And we want our employees to be happy, we want them to have a work, a culture that keeps them well and safe, for them to have great benefits, and pay is one of those benefits. So we have to establish what we want the outcomes of that study to be, and it will have a cost. And we will bring that back to city council for, for approval to implement.
Thank you. What, what is the tax rate right now?
55.77 cents is what is in the proposed budget. FY23.
55. what?
77.
55.77. Is there a way you can give me a dollar figure from a household?
So, the median household value, according to the Durham County Tax Office, and of course, this is the number I'm using, is a house valued at $244,000, $244,539, would be, at that, it would be $1,364 a year.
So $1,364 a year, that's what a household would pay.
That's what a household would be paying at that tax rate.
So if we made this decision right now to increase the step plan for the entire enterprise, is there a way that you could give a ballpark figure of what that household tax rate would be?
You're asking to, can you?
If we raised the taxes, the $16 million, right now, based on where the current rate is, which is $1,364, if we raised the $16 million to address the step increase right now, before the plan or the study, what would that be?
That would be probably about 4.1 cents, $16 million. And I have the calculation for 4 cents, it would take the, the current rate of $1,364 to $1,462, which is about $98.
Okay, so we're, we're looking to increase about 100 bucks for each household? If we were to do that right now?
But it, it, that is just addressing the step plan, and I think the city manager is, is looking to step in. That is not addressing, that is just the two steps that did not happen during the pandemic for, for staff that were here during that time, so.
Right, so, so we would have to address those steps, and then where we are now with the market adjustments and all of the other things to come with it?
That, that is not adjusting for any sort of, like, the consultant that we would be bringing in and market adjustments, that would be something in addition that we would have to take a look at, and that's not calculated in that $16 million.
Got you, so it's probably best that we, probably best that we allow the consultant to carry out this study so we can make a, a really informed decision.
Let me speak to that. So, whenever we have a market study, as I mentioned, the implementation of that actually brings what our current base of pay is to a market, a new market. That new market is added on to anything we currently have. So, that is a, that would be in addition to this implementation. So if that new market study requires additional funding that we cannot absorb in future budgets, then that's additional tax increases in order to cover that if you intended to implement what the consultant says.
Thank, thank you. So I, I, and I want to speak directly to our firefighters, this is going to happen. It's a matter of happening when we can actually make it happen, at least that's my interpretation. That may not be what we want to hear, and it's not what I want to hear, but it's what I can commit to, this, just me. And, and I'm talking to you all, and I'm also going to project this out to the entire enterprise. Because I don't want to say what feels good right now, and then not really be able to commit to that. Or I don't want to say what feels good, and then make a huge mistake, and then we have other issues. Because while we're talking about this, we also are so close to preventing the actual growth of the tax base. And the reason why we can get everything we ask for in the budget this year, the, the reason why we can get everything that we ask for in the budget this year is because we expanded the tax base. That means people moved here, and we built things for them to live in. So what's happening right now, we are really close to restricting the expansion of the tax base, but also we're asking for all of this as well. We're literally one vote away from that. And when we raise, the more, every time we raise taxes, there's a threshold of folks that will not be able to afford it. And we say we don't want displacement. It's a balancing act, something has to give. That's why I keep saying sitting in this seat is very tough, it's extremely tough. It's extremely tough. And it may not, you may not like everything that happens or may not like everything that is said. But one thing I will always commit to you is I will be responsible and honest. And that's where I stand. So I'm sure this will happen. I think it'll happen when we can make it happen.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you. Really quick, could staff actually get us? If we did, and I asked for this yesterday and I wasn't, so I apologize, I wasn't there this morning. I would like to see what it would be. I don't want to do the math myself. That's, I want to see what somebody's monthly bill would be with city and the county, because the county's doing a three cent increase and they pass their budget on Monday. When people pay their tax bill or it comes out of their escrow or whatever, they just pay one bill. They don't know. We break it out in their water bill and everything else. But when you have a county and a city named the same thing, people don't know. They just pay the bill. So I would like to see what the tax increase is going to be if we said yes. Because I will be very clear here, it's not just y'all. It isn't. In fact, our pay step folks who are not fire or police officers are actually making, like if we had followed the five, you know, if we just kept you, so you got the money, you didn't get the step. That's essentially what happened. If we, those general step employees, if we look at them, and I'm happy to send this staff to this analysis, I asked for this analysis at our last budget work session. I said, give me what happened to our folks with what we did versus if they'd gotten five percent and five percent, which is essentially what you're asking for. You got the money, you didn't get the step. I understand that you, because of your perception and everything else, you really want your steps. So do our police officers and so do our other employees who are on the step plan as well. Those folks didn't get the raise that y'all get. They actually came out less than our police officers and our firefighters. So it is my belief that either we right-size everyone or we don't right-size anyone, at least this fiscal year. That is a sixteen point eight million dollar ask. Maybe if we'd gotten the ask in January, we could have made some really hard decisions and said, no new initiatives, no new hires, no new anything. And the commitment we made was to right-size the organization and that's the decision we make, right? But that's something that has to happen, not in June, when we have to legally pass a budget by the end of June by state law, a balanced budget by state law. Then we could have had those tough conversations that would have needed to happen. That's not where we are right now. So what you're asking us to do as policymakers and decision-makers is to say, we're going to swallow and it may not even be enough, right? It's giving you all two steps, but then we're going to get this market analysis that may say, you know what, you got to even do more than that. So what we're going to actually ask the three hundred and thirty, well, city residents really, because the county residents would only get that three cent. We already know what the county's doing. So what we're going to be asking city residents to do in the middle of inflation, as y'all, it's expensive to live in Durham right now. I've made this, there's not a single one of us on the dais who could actually afford to buy in Durham. Your city council members cannot afford to buy in city limits. The pain you all feel is the pain most everyone who's lived here longer than five years is living. So you would be asking Durham residents to swallow a seven cent tax increase on their bill and I want the money, I want to see what that's actually asking folks. It's a lot. It is a lot in this moment. That's the decision we're being faced with. So I just, I'm being real clear and that's why I want to see, as I said last week, I don't see how we fix this problem if we don't fix everyone's problem. And just to be clear, can Madam Mayor, I'd like the city manager to give me some examples of the other types of employees who are on the step plan besides fire and police. Thank you.
And I do want to add one thing, Councilwoman Caballero. When I met with some of the firefighters representatives on last week, at this point, they asked, at least they asked me and they told me that they'd ask others to consider just one step, not until we get to the, to the market study. So they're not asking for the whole four cents. I think it would be the two cents and we wait for a market study was the proposal that I got from them. I don't know if anyone else got that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That ask has not come to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
They did ask me that. I don't know if they asked any others on the council. Okay, so yeah.
I just wanted to also add some clarity as well. I think for Councilmember Williams, I get what you're saying and I understand where you're coming from. You can stand firmly in what you're saying. I cannot. I sat on this council, on this dais and voted against a raise knowing that there were folks on our staff who were not receiving a livable wage. I brought it up then, I'm bringing it up now. So I cannot sit firmly like you can. So I want to make sure that that's clear to you. For the firefighters, I want to be clear for Councilmember Caballero, they've been asking for that for years. So it's not like it's a new request. When it didn't come to you in January, it was going to the city manager. And the city manager didn't include it in her budget that she presented to us. So there's no way for them to jump ahead of her in that process, which is why it comes to us and it's up to us to figure this out now. So I do want to say that it's hard to swallow anything that says we're looking at steps because that's not what I'm concerned about. What I'm concerned about is we said that we have everyone on a livable wage. And from our website, which is broadcast to the world, it says very clearly that the minimum, yearly minimum hourly wage wage should be for FY twenty twenty-three, seventeen dollars and sixty cents. When we have staff that has been organized through their union to demonstrate through collective organizing that we are not meeting our own set minimum wage, it is not, it is not, it's just, it's really frustrating because you can't say you're supportive of collective bargaining and not understand that they're fighting for their own wages. Like, that doesn't make sense to me at all. So I'm really like getting angry because there's no way to make it like more clear that they just need four votes to understand that they need to be at a minimum seventeen sixty an hour. That's it. I don't care about steps. You can do the market study. You can fix the compressions. Everyone on staff should be at seventy sixty. That is what we said we were going to do when we passed it. That is what we've been working towards. And yes, we took a pause, but we didn't pause ourselves. We didn't say, we're not going to give ourselves a raise. I said it very clearly to a couple of colleagues here, not to Councilmember Caballero, I won't even put you in that. But I did say it. You can't give yourselves a raise right now. We have not, we have not raised the wage for everyone else. That is where my anger lies. Like, that is what you're hearing, the frustration from five years of saying we need to raise their wages. And I'm specifically talking about fire because I've been talking about fire for five years, before the current police chief came, before the city manager was even the city manager. I've been talking about it. We managed to get them two additional folks on the trucks. We managed to get them additional gear. But what we haven't been able to do is to get them the actual money they need in their pockets. They can't keep coming to us asking for the things that they need. It's just not, it's just not honest. It's not respectful. It's just not.
What?
Councilwoman, Williams, go ahead.
Councilmember Freeman. You're, you say you're getting angry, you're frustrated. I feel you. Every time, there's an opportunity for us to make these type things happen. You said we need four votes. It only takes four votes to expand the tax base. And that's how we've been doing it. Because money doesn't grow on trees. Where is it going to come from? It is, it's just not going to appear. So I think we're saying the same thing, we all want it. I just want, what I do stand firm is I want to make a well-informed decision. And I just don't think we're there yet. And I'm not angry. I do get frustrated because of how complicated it is. But again, this is not a binary of who's supportive and who's not. And I.
Excuse me, hold up one second. The city manager has the floor now and then we'll go to Councilwoman Jose Hyman. And I think our staff may have the information that Councilwoman Javier requested or not. Maybe not.
Okay. Go ahead.
In that order.
So I wanted to address the minimum livable wage. That is a topic that we have questions about and that we work with every year, every time we raise that. The minimum livable wage is adjusted on July first. And for the city of Durham, our employees are paid bi-weekly twenty-six times per year. And the minimum livable wage equates to thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars per year. That's the minimum livable wage. And there are employees who we have to raise to that minimum livable wage in the city government. But none of those employees are in the fire department, nor are they in our police department at this time. So I wanted to make that very, very clear. There's no, there's, we've provided starting salaries in the proposed budget. Those starting salaries will go up, but none of them are at thirty-eight thousand three ninety-six. So I really did want to make that statement.
I appreciate that. I think what's frustrating is that you can't lie to my eyes. If I'm looking at a pay stub, all twenty-six of them, and they tell me that I'm below the livable wage, it's kind of hard to justify, that's all.
And again, it's kind of, I guess, frustrating for me too because I think I met with the fire department like months ago and they had already been saying that they had been to, you know, HR and the city manager or whatever and they didn't feel like they were being heard. But besides that, I want to ask a question. How much does it cost when we lose firefighters to retrain them, right? To hire and train? Because in my experience of being an administrator, it's always like, you know, what we try to do is always retain people because it costs so much to retrain them. You know what I mean? And so we're losing again. Again, I've said before, we have some of the best training here in Durham. And what we're doing is we're training them and spending money and they're going over places and they're getting the benefit of our hard training and our money here. So I want to ask that. And I also want to ask, how much does it cost to do this market study? How much money are we putting into that?
The, in the proposed budget is four hundred thousand dollars. And that is a, that is a number that we are using because we've had market or pay studies, classification studies done before. And that is the number we have. When we put the request for proposal out, we will get a, you know, a proposal to come in and hopefully it will be, you know, at or lower than that number based upon the scope of services that we need done. We have a very large workforce. We have a lot of different positions that need to be looked at in terms of the market pay, you know, and the career path for all of those employees. So that is the number that is in there. When we talk about how much it costs to train new employees, for certain employees, particularly in the fire department, we do our training in-house. So we have trainers, we have, you know, captains who we hire. And part of, you know, that's just one of the ranks. But part of the, you know, what we calculate when we talk about new employees coming on is the equipment that they use, it can't be reused again. You know, the uniforms and things that are, you know, that are, can't, you know, can't be recycled. Safety equipment, those kinds of things. While I don't have the number in front of me, there may be a staff person that has it. But we are, we are efficient with our training. And, you know, every organization has a cost to replace employees when they leave. That is, that is part of doing business.
Yeah, I think the reason why I ask is because, you know, I think earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we heard one of our firemen talk about might be sixty-one removals. I mean, people, I don't know, did they say sixty-one? Sixty-one members that might leave. So you just kind of times that in terms of having to then train those people back. That's why I was asking. And again, I was not on council. I think Freeman, you said you've been trying to do this for five, is it five years? And I hear Councilmember Williams says he is committed. I know, I think we all are. But I don't want to be, you know, and I don't know, I don't know if I'll be here for another five years. But while I'm here, I don't want it to be the same thing that they, you know, that it's, we're one vote away from making this happen. And so I would like to see, again, I keep saying this, let's make this happen.
For me, you know, it's not emotionalism, it's not, you know, it's pretty straightforward for me and my consideration and all of us have, you know, the way we think. Two years, we had a pandemic. And it seems to me at that time, there were already some adjustments being made for pay. And particularly, and during that pandemic, when those step increases were not given, there were people who were being called to do more while a lot of us sat home. Those were our firefighters and our first responders. And they did that. And they did it well. We are years, some years out from that. And so it seems to me that we have within our power, our city manager's job is to try to make sure that we go with, we have a balanced budget. But it's also under the auspices of the council that we do the same thing, but we have within our jurisdiction the ability to make adjustments to get to a balanced budget if you have some circumstances. I think this is a circumstance that's pretty clear. They didn't get it, none of them, especially the firefighters and the police officers. They got something, but they were also called to do something more during that time. But there were also others who didn't get it at all. I am fully prepared, as I said this morning, to meet them at the point where I think it was a great compromise. Give us the one step. We know what that cost is. It's about four million dollars. We're asking our tax bases to do two cent. That gives us time to get the market study and we can all kind of go on. But you cannot tell grown folk who count their dollars to look at their pay stub and don't believe what they're saying when it says you're making fifteen dollars an hour. You just can't ask them to do that. None of us would. None of us. I look at my pay stub and I'm in shock. So, and I'm just coming to do the political part of it. So, and it was raised. But we cannot raise ourselves, raise our employees and not think that people are looking at their, not looking at their check stub every time and seeing that as a hit to them. That's not a, that's not a hard issue for me. And I don't think that we have to. For me, I don't have to sit and analyze that. I've run budgets this big. It's not new to me to run big budgets. This is something we could do. You got three votes, I know. You need four. And with that, any other comments?
Yes. Has anything happened over the last five years, pay-wise? Because it sounds like it's projected that nothing has been given. And I'm not going to sit here on this council and act as if I don't care about our employees because that's what's being projected. I, that's not, I want to accept that. But as I said, I would make the hard decision to make the right decision. And that's what I'm committed to. And that includes giving our firefighters, as well as our staff, getting them where they need to be. But has anything happened over the last five years?
So the answer to that is yes. There's been pay increases to all city employees base pay at some level, with the exception of the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, fiscal year to end at twenty twenty-one. Every other fiscal year in the past five years, there's been raises provided to base pay for city employees. That's the answer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Yeah, could I just, if you're from the manager about positions, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, there's been a.
Yes. So we were asked in the follow-up budget hearings to just provide some examples of employees that are in our other pay plans. I did mention this morning that there are several pay plans that we have. We have a fire pay plan, a police pay plan. We have a general step plan, an open range pay plan and a part-time pay plan. We have a general step plan, an open range pay plan, and a part-time pay plan. Some examples of positions that are in our general step plan, solid waste collector, administrative assistant, custodian, electrician, fleet maintenance technician, and emergency communications, 911 emergency communications technician. Some examples of positions in our open range plan would be a community and economic development analyst, planner, engineer, business services manager, budget management analyst, community safety clinician. So across our organization, we would, we have approximately 200 different kinds of positions that employees work in all over the organization. More than half of those employees are frontline workers. More than half of them received premium pay of 5% during the year of the pandemic. It's not to, you can't, you can never pay someone for a service that is critical, that only they provide at a level high enough. So it has to be equated to something. In this case, we were able to allocate, I think it was $7.3 million for premium pay. It was 5% of the, of the salaries for employees who worked during the pandemic, day in and day out. And we provided that, that money to those employees directly as a bonus. The employees who say that was not paid, that was added to their base, they're correct. It was a bonus. It was 5% for 12 months. And overall, not just in police and fire, but in everyone that was working front-facing to the community on a day-to-day basis regularly, which was more than half of the 2,500 employees that we have. That is, that was the dollar figure, I think it was $7.3 million when it's a bonus. So that was the, that was the amount of money that was provided to employees in the year that there was no add to base. It was a bonus. For every other year, there was a raise provided to all of our employees. And, and that raise was added to their base pay. And it has accumulated to be the current pay that employees who are still with us are receiving.
Any other questions on this matter?
Yes, real quick, could I ask a few more follow-up questions?
Yes.
Thank you. So if I'm not mistaken, and I was here, so I'm just making sure I'm remembering correctly. Everyone's, everyone's paying in the entire organization from top to bottom. Our pay was frozen fiscal year 2020/21, which was the year of the pandemic. And that decision was made, and I was part of that decision. And we were very clear in that was not when manager Page was manager, but that was when manager Bonfield was manager. I specifically remember calling and said, we cannot lay a single person off, which is what municipalities were actually doing in that moment. They were laying folks off because they didn't know what their money was going to look like. Because at that time, that was pre-ARPA, that was pre, that was during the CARES Act money. In North Carolina, the two cities that got any substantive CARES Act money, if I'm not mistaken, were Raleigh and Charlotte. Everyone else got very little money. We got a little bit here, we got a little bit there. But in general, we didn't get that big payout that we saw with ARPA, you know, later on. So as a decision maker, when we were passing a budget, which we were 90% done with, if not a little bit, maybe 80% done with in March of 2020, when everything stopped, we had to make some real hard decisions. How are we going to keep an organization of over 2,500 folks afloat? We don't know what kind of raft is coming from the state or the feds, and it doesn't look good for us. And we're not going to lay anyone off when we know that their health insurance is probably tied to their employment in a pandemic. So we froze everyone. No one got a step that year, no one got bonuses. Then we started getting some money from the federal government. So we were able to do that hazard pay kind of retroactively, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Manager, in the following year, which would have been 21, 22 fiscal year. So that is the, the money that you're talking about, the 5% of premium pay wasn't added to base pay, but it was given. Was it enough? Absolutely not. We're never going to be able to repay our firefighters, our 911 call operators, our trash collectors, our recycling collectors. We're never going to pay our folks enough for what y'all did during the pandemic, which is you kept the city running. We're just not going to be able to. And I'd rather be honest and transparent than, than tell you all something that's not true. But you did get something that year. And then we were able to, Madam Manager, if I'm not mistaken, last year was the first year where you all got the big adjustment in January 22, which we acknowledged was like, okay, this is the beginning of, of movement. Again, was it enough? No, but I think that's why this market study is in there. It was a huge amount of money. Again, certainly a debt owed. And I've seen the studies, I'm happy to send it to any folks that need to see it, the, the analysis that was provided for staff. Those decisions, your steps maybe were not given, right? But the money that you ended up with your, in your pocket is more than, had you gotten the 5% and the 5%, which is what I think I'm hearing folks ask, right? So that was last year and this year. And then you're, again, we're making the same commitment. I understand we're going to have to deal with this issue. This is not us saying no. This is saying, we cannot manage this in this moment. Now, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, thank you for providing that update. That is not an update that's been provided to me about, is, is there a compromise? Happy to meet with folks again, but I do want from staff, I want folks to understand the money of if we, I want, you know, when you swallow, we swallowed it all, I want to know what that looks like because I want that communicated to folks as well. And I want it communicated if there was a compromise. Because we don't just operate alone in this. We have the county, we have to think about what their tax increase does as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman?
So just to touch a little bit on 2021, 2022, could you speak to how much of a surplus we had that year? And how much of a tax collection that we had that year? How much did we miss in what we collected after we did the freeze and then moved it to general fund?
So I do not have that number here. But what I can, the budget director may be able to get that during the conversation. But I would say, and it is, it is, it may not be directly in response to what you're saying is, you know, finding out what you have as a surplus at the end of any particular year, that is, that is, that is fund balance money. And that is, that is money that, that we collected and we did not spend in a particular year. And over time, that amount builds up. But in order to use that money in the future, it has to be for one-time expenditures or is, or is not, it is not really responsible to budget salaries or any type of recurring expenses out of a, a savings account. And that is not how we, we receive our, you know, our, our bond ratings and, you know, the, the other parts of managing a business, a government of this size in terms of the way that we, you know, we, we allocate to our budgets. So I don't have the answer. I don't know if the, if the budget director has it.
I'm looking for it, so.
Okay. And I could appreciate, I appreciate, you know, we want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and acknowledging that we're not using fund balance to cover salaries. What I'm saying is that because we took the pause, because we were so fiscally responsible, what we did was recreated the harm that we are seeing today. And so as a response, I think it is responsible to address it in the same manner. And so if it is a tax increase of two cents, I think that's responsible. And if it is, you know, a market study that does a full-on adjustment of 80 million, whatever it needs to be, I think those are responsible things. But what is not responsible is to try and act like we didn't receive the money, have a surplus, and then just put it into fund balance.
So, so I can't, I can't speak to what a portion of the, the surplus did go to. So in the mid, anytime we make a mid-year adjustment, you know, which, which is what we did when we did the public safety market study. We are using surplus funds in that year that we are already in in order to begin making the additional payments in salaries in a mid-year. So in the case of the market study that this council asked us to do mid-year, and, and was the right thing to do, when we actually implemented that portion of the market study, we used about $4 million of surplus in order to do it mid-budget. When we had to then annualize those raises, which we have reported to you have been, you know, 14, 15% increases to base pay for our public safety officers, then we have to annualize those raises in the next year, which is, was approximately $9 million that went into the following year's budget. So we did use some of that savings to start.
And I appreciate that because you're, you're highlighting that there is a process. And sometimes there needs to be adjustments. And those adjustments can take a long time. And so when you're, you're saying, you know, you're going to implement a study, the $400,000 will go towards a study, it could be one month that, you know, three months or four months before the market study even gets started. There's a whole nother year that could go by before anything is done. And all of that is still on the backs of staff, whether it's fire, police, open range, closed range, step, all of it, it's still on the backs of staff. And what is consistently like troubling is that we're just asking them to wait. And I, and I'm not, it's not to the detriment of the city managers, not at the city manager's decision. It is what the council is making the decision on. And so I'm very clear that you're, you're following the guidelines that were set by the state and by our budget office. Like you're following your guidelines, but we, as a council, still have a responsibility to our staff to actually adjust when necessary, based on the information that we have. And so yes, it can be confusing, it can be complicated, it can be hard to understand. But whether or not we do that and how we do that is still on us.
All right, we continue on to our next pooled item. We will come back to, the budget discussion is not over. We, as I indicated earlier, we will not take a vote on the budget until June 20th. So we will continue in this process. And we now turn our attention to item 19, which is the Carver Creek Supportive Housing Acquisition Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. And that was pulled, I believe, by Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. I, I just wanted, there's two specific things. One, I wanted to understand whether there would be city ownership in this property or if we're just transferring funds to an organization.
Good afternoon, Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager. We will transfer our funds to Durham County. They will develop the contract based on the requirements in our agreement with them.
And I just wanted to make sure it was plainly stated that there would be deed restrictions included in that contract with the dollars that are being transferred.
That is correct.
And then I also just wanted to disclose that I do own a home in this area and probably will see a bump in, in my appreciation because I could afford to actually buy something in the area. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now turn to your next pooled item, Councilwoman Freeman, which was item 29, I believe, which is the former Wheel Skating Center Upfit Design Contract Amendment with DTW Architects and Planners Limited. It's yours, item 29.
Yes, as always, whenever the wheel skating rink comes forward, I do want to make sure that we clearly state what is happening and how it's moving forward. I've read the documents, but I do want the public to hear as well that this is a contract that we discussed in many, many meetings. And I do want to appreciate Deputy City Manager Chadwell for spurring those conversations on and seeing them all the way through to actual understanding, so much so that we got to the crux of all of the things around Long Metal and the skate park and the skating rink, I want to say, so, yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Shawna Parker with the General Services Department. And the item that we are bringing forth today is a recommendation or a request to increase the contingency for DTW Architects' design contract in order to address some additional design and reconfigurations of the interior of the skating rink to address items that were recommended by the potential concessions operator for the facility. DPR is currently in conversations with the operator and they've made some recommendations for renovations to kind of make things more, make more sense for an operator standpoint, as well as making things better for the visitors to the, to the facility. I don't know if you want me to go into the specific.
No, I just, I just, I just know that it was clearly stated previously that there would only be ADA compliance and general, like repairs done. And this is to actually just address the concessions as you stated. Thank you.
All right, I think we have moved through all of our pooled items. We're going to take about a 10-minute recess. But before we do that, we are going to ask for our, our presentations to come in sort of reverse order that they appear on our agenda. So we will actually have our presentation from 39 first. The Durham Sports Commission will be first after, after the break. And then we'll follow that with our second presentation, which was item 13, that's 16, which is also a presentation as well. I also want to note that I did receive a, an email from Ms. Molina who wanted to remind me that she had made a request to censure Mayor Protem and wanted that added in to those other requests about censure from public folks. So I made that request so that she knows that that was done. We'll stand in recess until 3:15. Thank you.
So yeah, because I was going to, like, what I find is a key corner. I don't like to pick a key corner with the question just to be honest. 26.6.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
Did you know the city of Durham has interpretation and translation services available? The city adopted a language access plan to provide language services and help non-English speakers have access to city services and programs without a language barrier. Through the city's Language Access Plan, residents have the right to request interpretation and translation services free of charge, receive translation of vital documents and emergency communications in Spanish, and submit complaints of language discrimination or on the failure to adequately provide services in accordance with the city's Language Access Plan policy. For more information on the city's language access efforts, visit durhamnc.gov/languageaccess.
Here's some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before six AM on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects, such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees, and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling pickups, go to this web address.
I was looking for an opportunity and an old friend of mine suggested that I apply at Go Durham. The community really relies on us, on Go Durham Public Transportation.
Well, I like driving a bus because of the friendly culture. I love it in the morning when people greet me, "Good morning." They give me a friendly wave. They appreciate you. And that goes a long way being a bus driver in Go Durham.
Anything can be achieved here. You can come in at the bottom and you will be able to excel in a fairly short amount of time. Here, I started as an operator and I'm here now as an operator training specialist. So, as long as you stick to it, you can excel.
The perfect candidate that would excel at Go Durham is someone with tenacity, someone would drive, someone who wants to make a difference for their community.
You have to be people-oriented, you have to be experienced, and you have to be on hands, ready to go. But with the proper training, it's just like driving a car.
So, as a new driver with road training, come in and you see me and I'm going to make sure you have all the tools to succeed.
They give you a lot of input and they work with you step by step. So, you won't be alone in this.
To anyone considering working for Go Durham, you won't regret it. Please come, please apply. We would love to have you join the Go Durham team.
My younger sister was someone that never got involved with bad people. She was a selfless person and her life was taken away by her boyfriend due to gun violence in front of her three younger kids.
I was in my car, I heard loud gunfire. Didn't know where. I got shot was traumatic and the experience, I couldn't, you know, want anybody to live through. Gun violence can happen any given time, anywhere. I'm truly blessed to be alive today.
The person that did this to my sister is still on the loose and we were justice for my sister and for my nephews. We don't want for this to happen to another woman out there. Don't stay quiet, don't be afraid to talk.
I like being there for people. I like when my investigators and I go out there, that we're out there with a specific purpose and that's to try to bring somebody to justice on behalf of a citizen, to get a violent criminal off the streets.
I'm born and raised in Durham. I still have family members here, classmates, friends. It's personal for me.
We see on the news constantly the numbers of shootings is in the hundreds. Last year was pushing a thousand. So, you would think that around every corner, there's somebody with a gun, ready to shoot. But through our investigations, we've learned that the percentage of the population that's committing all these shootings is very low compared to the number of shootings that are actually happening.
Three fifteen, three fifteen. We will now turn to item thirty-nine, which is the Durham Sports Commission Multi-Sport Complex Presentation. All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs.
It says, there it is. So, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. Thanks for having us. I'm Susan Amy, President and CEO of Discover Durham. And with me is Marcus Manning, the Executive Director of the Durham Sports Commission. And we really appreciate you making time for this. We know that June is an exceedingly busy month for you all. The city of Durham and Durham County, in conjunction with Discover Durham and the Durham Chamber of Commerce, formed the Sports Commission seven years ago now with a mission to create economic and social impact for Durham through sports and sports tourism. Since then, even with the pandemic, the DSCs helped create over ninety million dollars in economic impact. It's brought new events to the community, which include seven, excuse me, four national conferences, seven state championships, conference championships, including this year's CIAA track and field one. And it's provided grants of more than five hundred thousand dollars to help local events expand and prosper. And Marcus has represented Durham in helping win the bid for the World University Games here in North Carolina in 2029. So, despite this early success, Durham's capacity for hosting sports teams and tournaments is really quite limited compared to many other communities across the state and those across the country and what they can provide for their kids. Our residents don't have as much access to sports play and competition as those in many other areas. And with a community that is growing as fast as we know this one is, we know it's critical that we are urgently planning for the future. So, working with some of the industry's top consultants, we've conducted a survey to define what it will take to support our youth and our adults with competitive sports facilities. And we've developed today's presentation to articulate the benefits this will have, especially for the kids. This project is a lot more than learning ball handling skills. The stakes are much higher than that. This presentation is the foundation and rationale for where we believe Durham needs to go in the future. So, later this calendar year, we plan to come back to you with a full proposal. We'll be asking for your commitment to the project at that time. Not a budget commitment, but a commitment to work together with us and with the county to plan a path to fund, create, and manage these new facilities, presumably as a collaboration of public and private enterprise. So, today, we want to review where we are and what we plan to prepare to support that proposal and ask for your feedback on anything else that you want to be able to see later so that you feel that you'll be fully informed or be fully able to make an informed decision at that time. So, that is the purpose for us being here this afternoon. And I'm going to turn it over to Marcus, who is going to share details about this project and its foundation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to have this conversation today. Very excited to be here and we can get started with the presentation. One of the things that I learned going through this process is the opportunity and access that's extremely important for the youth. And we got a chance to learn about Aspen Institute and Project Play. And their mission is twofold. One is creating access and opportunities for every child here in America, regardless of zip code. The other is making sure that there is opportunity to celebrate, educate, and promote the benefits of participation. And so, we've been excited and really fortunate to learn more about Aspen Institute and Project Play. And here we're seeing a video of the ten years of Aspen Institute and Project Play. Thank you so much.
My happiest childhood memories are the crazy games of touch football we used to play.
So, whatever the dollar figure is, as a society, as taxpayers and as corporate America, and who named, we should figure out how much that costs and then pay for it, period.
Imagination is key because you have to be able to envision it and dream it first, right?
I firmly believe that access to sports and safe and healthy environments for children to play should be made available to every kid.
Thank you, thank you. And so, one of the things that Aspen Institute did during the pandemic is really wanted to have an understanding of certain trends happening with youth sports. And so, they wanted to survey parents around the country. And what they found was that parents, the desired outcomes for them, they simply wanted their sons and daughters to have a positive mental health experience. They wanted, obviously, the physical health benefit as well, but then also just to have fun, develop social skills and peer-to-peer relationships. So, that was something for us that was this aha moment and really the mental health aspect of it. And so, they did a follow-up study and they evaluated two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. And they saw that, focusing in on fall of two thousand twenty-two, that just over fifty percent of parents felt like there was increased mental health experiences, positive mental health experiences for their children. They also felt like the social well-being experience through participation in sport. Over seventy-one percent of the parents felt like their children had an increased positive experience for social well-being. One of the other things that we found out, and this was through the playbook to get every kid to play in a game and participate, was that not only was it a positive impact for kids to participate as a child, but it had a positive impact throughout their entire life. Positive academic experience, higher self-esteem, even more productive at work in your career as they got older into adulthood. And so, all of these things spoke to just the positive experiences of participating in sport. Community sports, recreation, recreational sports, Little League, a sense of safety within an environment, and we know that's important here in Durham, a sense of self-awareness, and also a sense of belonging to a community. One of the other things that we found out as a group is we know about the positive benefits, but what's happening here over recent years is the cost of participate. We know that there is a divide that's happening all across the country and here in Durham. We learned that earning fifty thousand dollars or less, one in three families are saying that it costs too much for their sons and daughters to participate. We also know that travel ball is very popular now and it's increasing and getting more popular, but the cost is just over two hundred, excuse me, over twenty-two hundred dollars. And so, we are pricing families out and not allowing young boys and girls to participate in travel ball and just participating in their local community. Engage Durham Comprehensive Plan, there was a quote. One of the first things that's cut is recreation because of the cost. Two hours less time spent, lower socioeconomic kids. Two hours less spent than more than the upper-class youth. And so, as we're finding out, less and less opportunities, less and less time being spent. In the two thousand seventeen Durham County Youth Risk Behavior Survey, we found that lower-quality parks and neighborhoods where youth of color live contributes to lower levels of physical activity. Again, the opportunities are not there for our youth. High school participation, over the last twenty years, there's been an increase in high school participation. One of the things that we've seen is a reduction in major crime and fewer suspensions. And so, that's meant for the youth and for high school participation an opportunity to really identify emerging sports. And so, that's something that we think this project can do as well. So, we know that there's a positive benefit to participate. We know that there is a lack of access and opportunities in Durham. We also know that we're going through this transformational period in Durham. We are experiencing a growth. In nineteen sixty, we had just over seventy-eight thousand people here living in the city. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-one, over three hundred and twenty-six thousand. You may ask the question, why nineteen sixty, right? It may seem arbitrary. That is the same time that Durham County Memorial Stadium was in its infancy stage. Let's think about that, right? So, as we're going through this transformational type period here in Durham, we are seeing cities and communities here in our area and across the country starting to invest in sports facilities. And so, here is a snapshot. And so here is a snapshot of different communities that are investing, and I will not go through all of them, but I do want to highlight a couple. Cary is building a new 300,000 square foot facility that's scheduled to open in 2027, highlighted by basketball, volleyball, 12 basketball courts, 20 volleyball courts, and also an e-gaming arena. And I'll repeat that, an e-gaming arena, which is which is pretty cool. Virginia Beach, one of the largest facilities on the East Coast, over 285,000 square feet, highlighted by 200-meter hydraulically banked track and 12 basketball courts. Rocky Mount, an hour away, has 165,000 square feet of indoor space and has transformed Rocky Mount in terms of participation, not only basketball and volleyball, but also concerts as well. And then we see Durham at this particular time. And right now, as it stands today, we don't have anything like this in our community. So we know collectively that there is an opportunity here. Outdoor facilities, Westfield, Indiana, just outside of Indianapolis, over 400 acres, 32 diamonds, 21 flat fields, baseball, softball, flag football, football, lacrosse. London County, Virginia, just had a grand opening last September, 17 fields all lit for baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse. Wilmington, North Carolina, just broke ground in February, 64 acres, 11 fields, built for rugby, soccer, lacrosse, ultimate frisbee. I mentioned Durham County Memorial Stadium in 1960 represents 25 acres. That's where we're currently at, and we are excited about Merrick Moore Park, 50 acres, four multipurpose fields, and we would definitely put that to use. And so we are excited, I want to repeat, excited about that opportunity. But again, we know what the opportunity is for us here in Durham in terms of indoor and outdoor space. So the question becomes, why break ground now, right? We know there's an opportunity for us. We know the positive benefit for sport. We have a full understanding if we don't have opportunities and the access to participate in sport, and we know we're growing in population here in Durham. So we can say that there's a transformational type opportunity for us collectively as a community. I won't go into too much detail about the mission of economic and social impact. Susan did a great job of laying that out for us. But I will tell you, in October of 2020, I started with the Durham Sports Commission, and our vice chair, Susan Scott, told me that you have an opportunity as the executive director to meet the moment. We as a community have this opportunity, right, to meet the moment when it comes to sport and providing access and providing opportunity and think about sports tourism. And so with that, this type of project, this type of project, and you're going to hear me talk about opportunity a lot, right? The revenue and economic impact that can be generated through sports tourism, going from point A to point B, traveling because of sports can fund the operation of a facility. In turn, that can offer opportunities for our residents and our youth to participate. Now, you think about that, let's press pause, and I'll repeat this a little bit later, but one of the things that we see happening now is that, I mentioned, travel ball is popular, right? So our youth, what they're doing now is they're leaving Durham to participate in these type tournaments, regional and national tournaments. This type of project allows our youth to stay right here in Durham and to participate. So that's just something for us to think about as we continue to have this this conversation. How do we define success of this type project? First and foremost, it's a community asset. And we will repeat that, that is the number one thing, it is a community asset. Number two, we've talked about this a little bit, but it expands opportunities for participation in our community. Number three, with sports tourism, it can be a significant driver of economic impact, a significant driver of economic impact. And number four, operationally sustainable business. Those are the four definitions of success, and if we can achieve all four, there's a transformational impact that will occur here in Durham. Proposed concept, I can see the excitement that all you have right now, right, as we continue on this afternoon, so stay with me here. Number one, the indoor complex, 250,000 square feet, highlighted by 200-meter hydraulically banked track. Right now, we have eight. The newest one you see pictured here is in Boston, the New Balance Center. 12 basketball and volleyball courts, a 5,000-seat arena. Just over 38,000 square feet of flex space. I want to make note, and this is extremely important. We have titled this a sports complex, but it is a multi-activity type complex. You can see highlighted there, the space is dedicated for community programming and learning. Non-sporting type activities, four additional basketball and volleyball courts, and also a 10,000-square-foot family entertainment arena with the thought of possibly having esports. The outdoor portion, just over 37 acres, eight baseball and softball fields, four full-size multipurpose fields, all synthetic turf, all lit. It provides us the flexibility to host and have multiple sports, multiple activities, both indoor and outdoor. Just in summary, just over 250,000 square feet indoor, highlighted by 200-meter hydraulically banked track, over 38,000 square feet of flex space, and over 37 acres of outdoor space that includes the synthetic turf, diamonds, and flat fields. I mentioned non-sporting activities. There is an opportunity, as we have this type facility, that we can host multiple activities that are not sport-related. I just want us to keep that top of mind as we have this conversation. In terms of talking points related to this facility, it's a balancing act of local programmatic opportunities in sports tourism. Serves as a year-round sports and recreation hub for Durham, providing those opportunities. We've talked about the multitude of activities serving a wide range of community pursuits. It has the capability of operating in Monday through Thursday, serving the local community, but on Friday through Sunday, the capability of hosting regional and national tournaments that can be a significant driver of economic impact for Durham. Again, having individuals and families come to Durham to participate and play in regional and national tournaments. You may ask what type of opportunities as it relates to sports. I won't list them all, but you can see everything from acrobatics and tumbling to stunt to wrestling to flag football to basketball to esports. And this is the third time I mention esports because I'm excited about that potential opportunity. But if you look at over 20 sports, not including your non-sport activities, we start to realize that this is a transformational type opportunity for us. We've touched on this, sports tourism funds local community growth. We've seen it in other communities. We've seen it across the country, and we wholeheartedly believe that we can do this here in Durham. The economic impact. Sports events and tourism, stated industry report completed in 2022 stated that there was over $91 billion in terms of economic impact just related to sports tourism, just over 39.7 billion in direct visitor spending. Over 635 jobs generated through sports tourism. The sweet spot for sports tourism, youth, 97% of communities across the country hosted some type of youth tournament. That includes us here in Durham as well. You have your kids, you have the families, your cousins, your aunts and uncles all traveling to watch these tournaments, regional and national tournaments. Collegiate, 83%. And I think we can all agree, right here in Durham, we have two of the best universities and college athletic programs in the country. And so we can lean into that as well as we think about this potential possibility. We did an initial study in 2021, and it said that by year three, we could be profitable in terms of operations. By year five, we could host over 100 events and also have over generated $35 million in economic impact. Now Susan will talk about next steps, and that'd include another feasibility study that we're, an updated feasibility study that we're going to go through. So we will come back with updated numbers. And that leads us to our next steps. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to be in front of you today, and thank you for listening. Thank you.
All right, so we have identified eight next steps. And as I said in the beginning, our objective here is to get feedback from you about what we're planning to, how we're planning to move forward on this project. And we intend to come back in the fall, having completed the eight steps that we're going to talk about here, but want to hear if we have been thinking broadly enough about this and if you think we're on the path to be ready to answer the questions that you would very likely have. So to cover the steps, one, we're doing the, an updated market analysis and capital cost projections. Those were done back before the pandemic, and as we all know, all of those figures are being thrown out and updated. Second is stakeholder and user group meetings, and this includes both talking to people, coaches and league members and parents that would be using a facility like this, and also talking, as we look at different areas in Durham where a facility like this could go, also wanting to talk to people in those communities to make sure that we have done a good job of community engagement. The third one is the updated financial forecast. Marcus just referred to the the original one that was done. The idea for a project like this, as he said, is that while the community will need to invest from a capital cost standpoint, the facility itself would be work, operate on at least a break-even standpoint. Many people have pointed to the type of agreement that we have around D-PAC and how that's managed. The idea for this facility would be something a little similar, where we would anticipate hiring a management company, and there would be an opportunity to share profits rising out of operation. So what we need to do now is work out what the details would be of what we can expect from a revenue and cost standpoint and what that projection would be on break-even. The updated economic impact analysis will also come along with this, and that's tied to some degree with where we think the facility might go. But clearly, part of the story here is not just the operation of the facility and how financially viable it is, but also all of that additional spending that a sports facility brings in that supports lodging and restaurants and bars and retail in the area. The fifth one here is the recommendations. What we'll be coming back with is we'll be refining the project scope. You just heard where we are right now, but we'll be looking at a recommendation and probably we'll bring you a couple of different alternatives for the the scope of what this facility could look like. Our recommendation on physical location, some renderings of what a facility like this might look like, and then some early thoughts on the financial planning approach. As I said earlier, our next phase, looking forward to us aligning around wanting to move forward, will be figuring out how a project like this can be financed. The next one is leadership site visits. We are working with Discover Durham and the Durham Sports Commission, or working with the Durham Chamber and with Downtown Durham, Inc., to plan an inner-city visit for this fall. And a significant part of the agenda for that will be visiting other facilities and hearing from other communities about how they've approached sports tourism that would be relevant to us. We'll take all of that information, synthesize it so that we can come forward with recommendations that we hope you'll find are very well thought out. And of course, we'll be, want to prepare for the discussions and Q and A that would come out of that. So those are the next steps we're anticipating, and at this point, we would love to hear your thoughts and feedback on whether this is a holistic enough approach to this topic.
Thank you both for being here this afternoon. I will open it up to my colleagues to see if there are questions or comments. All right.
I just have.
Councilwoman Jose Ham. Yeah.
Oh, I had to say. Oh, thumbs up. I just want to say, I don't know where you were like 10 years ago. Both of my daughters played club volleyball, and now they are adults and have played in college. But as you said, the statistics of how much it costs for club volleyball, the traveling, which I think it was a wonderful experience because it taught them so much. My husband literally had to get two part-time jobs, law enforcement, two part-time jobs to be able, because I literally paid almost a tuition, well, I didn't pay, he paid it, a tuition for them to be able to participate in club volleyball. So I, I don't know where you were, but we need to, yeah, think about getting this going. Because I just also like the fact that you brought up the mental health piece. And I know, you know, being a social worker, a social work professor, anytime you get, you know, youth involved in creative activities, it does help their whole well-being, mental health, everything. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Councilwoman, copy error.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for the excellent presentation. I'm excited to see the next steps and how we figure out how to bring this to the community. We need it. One, real quick, with the cross-country, would it just be an, obviously like, like what they have at Wake Med right now with their outdoor trail? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Wade.
Thank you for bringing this before us. I, it's really hard to say which part was my favorite because it touched on so many areas. I think ultimately, this is, this is the type of response we want to the crime that we're seeing in the, with amongst our youth in the city. They're bored, and they need something to do. And I think that this would help with that. Also, economically speaking, this is so significant, so significant. We look at D-PAC, you know, and how well that's performing, and that's the arts, you know. I, there's a group of kids right now that are trying to raise money to fly out to Oregon, I believe, and it's costing them nearly, what, over $100,000 or something? 110. It'd be great if our kids didn't have to try and come up with that money, they could be right here, but instead, other communities are bringing their investments here. And I also love the idea of it being multifaceted, you know, a multipurpose event center, you know, that we can, we can do these things. And, and, you know, Cary last week, didn't even know about this, but they just did a 707 soccer tournament. And it's kind of like a, it's a, it's not the the major league or whatever, but it's where, you know, folks from all types of sports play soccer. Ocho Cinco is there. The women's U.S. soccer team was there. What's the, a bunch of NBA stars were there, and they played soccer as a hobby on the side, and it was for a million dollars, grand prize. But Cary, the city of Cary, because they had this last week, raked in 1.3 or 1.7 million dollars over five days because they had a cluster of soccer fields. Now imagine if we had all of these type fields. I can, I can see having a con- I can, I can see having a concert in there as well with the big name. So I, I just wanted to put those, those benefits that I took from this in, out in the atmosphere. The question I had is, was, would, this is an opportunity for us to have a naming rights opportunity for major sponsorship, right? Like, the Boston one has the New Balance Center.
Yes, as we consider what the financial stack would be to put together a facility like this, naming rights and sponsorship would certainly be a big piece of that conversation.
Great. So when Coach K calls Nike and say, the Nike Bull City Athletic, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Heard. Thank you. This is amazing. Can you hurry up and get to the next steps? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman, followed by Councilwoman Jose Hymen again, and that'll be the last round.
Thank you. I, I appreciate my counselor colleague's comments. I, I just wanted to find out if you made this presentation to the county as well already?
We are making it later this month.
And because I am understanding that this is the commission for the city and county?
The sports commission was formed by inter-local agreement, including both the city and the county, and we would expect that we would be working together with both as we work on how to make this happen.
And I, I want to appreciate your diligent work in seeing this all the way through. I know you've been pushing around this for the last three years, and very hard this last year, and so I'm glad you finally made it in front of us. I also, I'm pretty excited about the opportunities on the economic side. They're not just naming rights, but also the jobs that it would provide. This is, this is pretty huge, and I'm, I, I don't want to sound underwhelmed, but I am concerned that it's a few years off, and so we're just talking about a study. And as we start to think about what happens between now and then, we need, we need to make sure that we're working towards drumming up the support for it on both sides in a way that is like supply and demand. And so I hope that you'll be supportive in that work as well, and not just focused on this one task. And that's what, that's what, that's what my ask would be of you. I think you're in the right vein. I know that you put a lot of time and effort into this presentation. I've heard it before, I apologize. It's just hard to kind of keep focus when, when you've heard it a couple of times. But it's important that the general public understands, like, this is a great opportunity more than, you know, we're, we're talking about an aquatic center and this sports complex at the same time, and it makes sense that it'd be a great investment. And that might mean that there may be 10 cents on the tax rate that it gets raised. So I want folks to be prepared for that, but it would actually expand the tax base, as was mentioned earlier, because if you can bring in a million dollars on a weekend, you know, it kind of decreases what we have to ask for from our residents. And so it's a, it's a very holistic approach to addressing all of the many issues that we have around making sure our children have someplace to play, that our adults and seniors can, can stay active, and then also so that the workforce has someplace to learn and grow and develop. So I'm appreciative. Thank you.
I just wanted to say real quickly that it also increases our economic development here because not only, you know, with the club volleyball and just traveling, you're bringing hotels, you know, people have to eat food. I remember, you know, a lot of us had to go travel to Florida, to Raleigh, and you're there all day, so you're looking for, you have hotels for the whole weekend, you're eating, like, it's a lot of money. So I think it would definitely bring some economic growth for us also. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments this afternoon, and we thank you, and we look forward to the next steps.
Thank you very much.
Return now to item 16, a presentation and ordinance to establish standards for trespass from city property. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Attorney Tosco.
If you'll bear with me for just a minute. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Anne Marie Tosco. I'm an Assistant City Attorney with the Durham City Attorney's Office, and I'm here to present to you today on a proposed ordinance to establish standards for trespass from city property. It's proposed to be added as a new Article 8 to Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances, which address public safety. The impetus for this ordinance was a recent lawsuit where a former employee who was trespassed from city property for engaging in threatening and harassing conduct sued the city. In defending this city in that lawsuit, the City Attorney's Office identified some issues with our existing trespass procedures, specifically that there were no documented citywide procedures that afforded individuals who were trespassed due process rights, such as notice and an opportunity to be heard on the trespass. We did have some individual departments who had policies that did so, but nothing citywide. So when trespass issues arose in other departments, they had no procedures to fall back on. This ordinance resolves that issue by formalizing standards for trespass across the city. It is protective of the public in that it enshrines their constitutional rights to due process, as I just mentioned, by affording them both written notice of the conduct subject to trespass and an opportunity to be, to be heard on that trespass, as well as their First Amendment rights as the conduct subject to trespass are content neutral standards. By doing so, it's protective of the city, as it guards the city against liability from future lawsuits that claim that we have not afforded individuals these rights. The Supreme Court has long recognized the city as similar to a private owner of property in the way it's allowed to control the use of its property. Pardon me. While there's consent to enter property that is publicly owned, that consent can be revoked by a government if somebody lawfully authorized to do so revokes it, or if an individual engages in conduct that is disruptive or dangerous. So establishing this ordinance doesn't give the city any new authority to trespass individuals, and we don't want to use it to trespass more individuals. We just want to use it to create standards to address trespass across the city uniformly when those issues do arise. As the city is authorized by the state to regulate by ordinance conduct that is detrimental to public safety or the peace and dignity of the city, the City Attorney's Office has proposed regulating these standards in an ordinance. That conduct that is subject to trespass is that which is dangerous, unlawful, or unreasonably disruptive. And the ordinance does define, these are, again, those content neutral standards, what they mean to guide a decision maker when they're requested to trespass somebody. Dangerous conduct is that which creates an imminent or unreasonable risk of injury or harm to persons or property. Unlawful conduct is that which is prohibited by federal, state, or local law. An unreasonably disruptive conduct is that which, in consideration of the nature, scope, use, and purpose of the property, either unreasonably interferes with the orderly conduct of city business, or with others' use or enjoyment of approved activities on the property, or is unreasonably inconsistent with the normal use for which the property was designed and intended to be used. And these definitions make clear that they are not intended to apply to conduct that is protected by the First Amendment. The ordinance houses authority to issue notices of trespass with the city manager. It encourages city staff to observe conduct that could be subject to trespass to first, if it's safe to do so, request the individual cease the conduct or leave the premises, but if they do not, then the city manager is authorized to issue a written notice of trespass to the individual. And the ordinance does authorize the city manager to delegate that authority to other city officers or employees that she deems appropriate, given their general area of responsibility within the city. This delegation would have to be made in writing, though, so that everybody understood who was authorized to issue these notices. If you'll bear with me for just a moment, you've heard me say due process many times, and now I'm going to get a little bit granular as to what that process should look like. The first step in that due process is that notice I've been mentioning. Again, that is going to take the form of a written notice of trespass here that will be in writing and has to contain certain contents, specifically the reasons for the trespass, so not only describing the conduct the individual engaged in, but which of those definitions it falls under, describing the locations from which an individual is trespassed, and for how long, warning the individual of the consequences for reentering city property after they have been trespassed, and most importantly, informing them of their right to appeal the trespass in order to comply with that second prong of due process, which is the appeal to the city manager. In order to contest a written notice of trespass, an individual is asked to provide a written statement and any evidence in their support to the clerk within a week of the notice of trespass. The city clerk will then schedule a review hearing at which the city has the burden of proving it is more likely than not that that individual did in fact violate the ordinance, at which time the manager will receive all the evidence and can uphold, rescind, or modify the notice of trespass. And the manager must rescind the notice of trespass if the city fails to meet its burden or if the individual proves that the conduct they were trespassed for was intended to be expressive conduct protected by the First Amendment. This decision is final and must be communicated to the individual in writing within five business days of that review hearing. The consequences of reentry, I mentioned earlier, if someone were to reenter city property from which they'd been removed and banned from while that notice of trespass was effective, the city has a few options at its disposal. The ordinance authorizes the manager to extend the duration of the notice of trespass. The city can seek arrest of the individual for violation of criminal trespass statute, such as second-degree trespass, or the city can seek civil remedies, such as a court order prohibiting that individual from returning to the city property in question. Finally, we are cognizant that even individuals who are trespassed from city property may need to continue to conduct city business, access city services, or engage in First Amendment-protected conduct. So the ordinance does contain language authorizing the manager to allow individuals to reenter city property even if they've been trespassed when there's no reasonable alternative locations or means for them to engage in those activities. It does authorize the manager to impose reasonable restrictions to minimize any disruption, threat, damage, or injury in order to comply with the intent of the ordinance to preserve the public safety and prevent the disruption of city business. I know I ran through that pretty quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions? Thank you for, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. What was the resolution of the case that you mentioned that led to this policy being?
My understanding is it settled for $15,000 in October 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Attorney Tosco.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great job. All right. I believe that we have now completed all of our presentations, and we will turn to our clerk for our boards and commissions.
Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, everyone. I will go through all of the ballots that have reached consensus and leave the one that hasn't to the end of the report. Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee appointment for the category of nonprofit organization is Nicholas T. Parriante. Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission appointment for the category of youth, Hannah M. Preston. The Recreation Advisory Commission appointment, Karthik Sundamarthi. Housing Appeals Board mayoral appointment, John R. Griffin. Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment is Joseph F. Jordan and David R. Long. The nomination to the Durham Convention Center Authority appointment is Matthew Clobridge. The Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee appointment for the category of corporate private sector is Humphrey Truitt. Human Relations Commission appointments, there are two. One for the Caucasian non-Hispanic person is Anne Sutkowski Hemstreet, and for the Hispanic-Latino person is Javier Alvarez Hayemis. The Housing Appeals Board appointment for two categories, the first is at-large alternate member is Darren K. Chester, and the regular member homeownership is Gwendolyn Barlow. The Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board appointment, two vacancies, both for at-large is Jonathan Chan and Sandra D. Howell. The last item is the Durham Planning Commission appointment, there is no consensus. We have three votes for Talib Graves-Mans, three votes for Sarah Oliver, and one vote for Matthew E. Kopack.
Madam Mayor, I can flip mine to Gravesman.
Okay. Okay, so Talib Graves-Mans is the nomination, and that's the end of the report.
Thank you so much. All right, we will turn to our city manager to settle our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I settled the agenda, I did want to speak to some of the questions that came up during the earlier discussion related to item 15. While Christina is coming to respond to some of them, I wanted to answer a question of Councilmember Jose Hymen regarding the cost for training a recruit, a fire recruit. So in the follow-up information that you received, our current entry level pay for a fire recruit is $40,682 per year. A, a recruit is in training for approximately 10 months. So that's kind of the, the background for, for what the numbers are that I'm going to provide. So during recruit, during the recruit period, there's personal protection equipment that is issued. We can't, we, we cannot, you know, reissue that. There are uniforms, there's books, there's testing and physicals. Together, we call those sort of onboarding costs, and together, those costs are $10,477. So that is, that's the equipment part of, of bringing on a new recruit. You know, for the listening public, all of our recruits from day one, from the day that we hired them to come onboard, they become a city employee with benefits, and they are paid as any other employee throughout their training period. So because we list that, we estimate that to be about 10 months, and we consider a training cost for a new person to be the salary that that employee would receive while they are actually in training. So for 10 months, that salary amount is $33,901 for 10 months, and when you estimate for benefits, it goes up to about $44,000. We have another number that that $44,000 is included in, which is, is, you know, their salary plus their, what we call a task book program that they are involved in during that 10 months, and it is $53,916.67. So the total number that we have is $64,393, including the salary and benefits and hard costs or, you know, equipment costs for the recruit while they are in the academy. Total $64,393.67. That is the cost of, of their hard, you know, things that they need for safety, uniforms and training, as well as their salary and benefits during, during the training period. So that was, that was the response to one of the questions. Christina also has some information regarding the tax increase for a city resident based upon the proposed county tax increase on the city resident, as well as any follow-up information that you might have once, once she provides that information.
Yes, and, and as Councilmember Javier Caballero said, the proposed tax increase for the county is three cents.
Christina also has some information regarding the tax increase for a city resident based upon the proposed county tax increase on the city resident, as well as any follow-up information that you might have once she provides that information.
Yes, and as Councilmember Javier Cabiero said, the proposed tax increase for the county is 3 cents at this point. So I will be using, with the numbers that I'm using, I'm using the median home value, which is given to us by Durham County Tax Office, which is that $244,539. So the tax rate, the proposed tax rate for a Durham County resident would be 75.22 cents, which, when you calculate it, is $1,839. If you add that to our proposed tax rate as it is now, which is 55.7 cents, a city resident would be paying $3,203 on a home valued at $244,000.
That's annually, correct?
That's annually, correct.
If you have it in a monthly or on your escrow, then it would be divided by 12.
Divided by 12, exactly.
Okay, and that is, that includes the 3 cent that's already included, and then what we have proposed.
That's what our proposed and what they're proposed is as of this moment.
Thank you. I'll let you keep going, because maybe you have the next numbers for me.
So if, remind me what the next numbers are.
If we were to do the 4 cent.
The 4 cent, which would be about $100 more, someone would be paying $3,301. Or close to 3, it's $97, so, but yeah, if you round up.
Thank you.
So what I wanted to do before I attempted to set the agenda is to, because we will be putting Item 15, the budget adoption, on general business agenda. If there are any other questions that the council would like for us to find a response for and put it in memo form and attach it as part of the GBA, so for the next, you know, the next June 20 meeting, that information will be coming through the agenda cycle response. We are hopeful to hear that at this time.
Do we know the percentage of, the percentage of tax participation right now amongst our residents?
It is over, you mean the tax collection?
Yeah.
We are budgeting at 99.5%. That's what we are budgeting at. We are, we are actually collecting at a higher rate, but I don't have the exact number for last year.
And I want to make sure, did you say participation?
Yeah, like, do we know how many folks actually pay taxes in the city based on the population?
Well, I'm going to, I know we don't have that, but I'll respond in this way. Anyone that owns residential property or, you know, commercial property in the city limits, they pay city taxes, or if they own a motor vehicle. That is, those are the two types of taxes that we primarily receive. I do believe there are some small amounts for unlicensed vehicles, maybe, but it's primarily motor vehicles and residential property as well as commercial property. When we present the budget, because, you know, most of our taxpayers are, they can relate to, you know, the calculation based upon, you know, a residential home, you know, we don't try to calculate how much it would be for all of our different types of taxpayers, but the rate is the same for everyone based upon the assessed valuation, and it is for real property and motor vehicles. You know, certainly our renters, you know, people who have commercial or, you know, property that they're renting as their costs, you know, change for whatever reason, sometimes our renters, we don't like to leave them out as they, you know, are part of, you know, the financial model of what happens with taxes, but primarily we look at residential and commercial property owners. There is also a category of business personal property, I left that out, that is taxed as well. But we do not know the percentage of our residents that pay. We know some are young people, and they don't pay any, but if they're not working, we don't have, we don't have that.
So it would probably be helpful to also have the number with the 2 cents, as the mayor mentioned, that they had offered a concession of sorts at the one step, and what that rate would look like in those numbers.
A 2 cents would be $3,252. That's city and tax, sorry, city and county. 2 cents is $48, $49, about $50 additional for a city resident, based on that value that I gave you before.
And we will, you know, we know that this is verbal communication, so we will put, you know, this information in the memo as well, but we wanted to just make sure that the questions that you have are included in that follow-up agenda memo.
And also just to note that nonprofits and churches are exempt from taxes, and anyone who's exempt from paying taxes would not qualify. And so we have a lion's share of nonprofits in this city, and often they own property. And so that's not on there, like, it's not an increase to those organizations or entities.
Ready? Okay. So for consent, we have Items 1 through 14. For GBA, we have Item 15, Consent, Items 16 through 38, and 41 through 43, and one GBA public hearing, that is Item Number 40.
All right, is there a motion? So move?
Second.
So a move by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Are those in favor, if you're saying by saying aye?
Aye.
Are all those opposed have the same right? Hearing none. We have settled our agenda. Are there any other matters that would come before the council today?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, in conversations with the city manager, did want to bring to council for thumbs up, thumbs down, what have you, on an option for summer camp addition for seven weeks at Cornwallis with a science wraparound that would cost around $40,000. And so I just wanted to look to the council to just see if there was support.
What was that again?
A summer camp option. So DPR does summer camps at many locations. They have a long waitlist, and so some folks in the community have tried to put together a seven-week program that would be located at Cornwallis. And I will say that this came to me through school board member Javony Lewis, and folks in the community who have been working trying to make sure that all the students have someplace to go, and this would give them an additional option for seven additional weeks for those folks who are sitting on the waitlist.
So I know that I did receive communication the last couple of days. Is there a, is there a particular vendor?
Yes.
Okay, there's particular, and it will be, it will start before this fiscal year ends?
Yes.
Okay, we will work, we will work to, to provide a follow-up information regarding it.
And then just one additional ask of council. I know that we normally don't offer a sponsorship when it's not in the city, but Wimage with the National League of Cities will be in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I did want to see if there was appetite, considering there are five women on this board who might be in attendance for sponsorship of this, from the city of Durham.
Do you have a cost for what that is?
I would leave that to the city manager. I mean, it could be 2,000, it could be 5,000, it's not, it's just kind of a vote of support for the project or the work that's happening.
And that's, I don't, I don't know that I participate in that organization a lot, but is that the one that...
The North Carolina, well, the North Carolina League of Municipalities and is a part of the National League of Cities, and I've served as the president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Women in Municipal Government, and the state, the national president of the League of Municipalities Women in Municipal Government is from North Carolina, so she's hosting the event in Charlotte, North Carolina this year, and both Charlotte and Winston-Salem have both made contribution commitments for sponsorship, and I just want to make sure that the city has not missed on that. And I had shared that paperwork with the county city manager.
I will be attending, so I would like to support, yes.
I'm looking at you, I'm fine with that. If you all are participating in it, that's...
These kinds of things, to my understanding, typically come out of our, like, our travel funds? So is this a request for something outside, like, couldn't people who are going just...
It's not, it's not for travel, it's for the sponsorship of the event. So, like, to say the city of Durham supports the North Carolina, oh, not North Carolina, the women, National League of Cities Women in Municipal Government.
Okay.
So like a conference sponsorship.
Uh huh.
Like, if Local Progress was hosting in North Carolina and we were to sponsor...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Y'all giving a thumbs up?
I'm cool, just, I would love a heads up. I would love a heads up before, because I, we asking questions and answering at the same time.
Yeah, I don't know enough or feel comfortable. I mean, maybe send all of us the information that you sent others, or to the, I didn't send it.
I just recognize the name is, I have about two or three of us.
Yeah.
Because we all, we all, well, not some of us.
On that kind of board, or they...
The city is a member, the city is a member of the organization. I think, no matter what it is, I just would like a heads up prior to, but if we can, if you can make it work...
Yeah, if you can make it work.
Well, one of the things I do, I do want to say, you know, as a Durham city manager, the budget year that we are in is at the, toward the end of the current budget year. You know, all of, everything that we support or sponsor, you know, it falls in someone's budget, or if it doesn't, we have to, you know, we have to find a place to fund it from. When the council provides us direction, you know, majority of the council provides us direction to do something, then we seek to, you know, if it's a public purpose, you know, we seek to try, to do that. So we've heard there was support for up to 40, was, is it 40, up to 40? $40,000. We're going to evaluate who that, you know, who is providing that, you know, that service, and, you know, just as we would do any other agreement, we would, we would review it. And at this point in the year, we probably do have budget that is available from departments that don't spend all of their funding, but we need the authority to go ahead and do the things that we would typically do to vet a contract. And the sponsorship is the second request, and I don't know, I don't know that there was a direction for me to find, find that.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I don't object to the content of either of these requests, they both sound fine. I do have concerns, though, about the process of council members just kind of bringing last-minute funding requests to us. I feel, and for that reason alone, I would, I'm uncomfortable with both of these items actually moving forward. I think that we should in general, like, follow our processes that allow our staff to make these kinds of decisions so that it doesn't seem like council members can just pull money out of thin air and grant it to people as, like, you know, I just think that, I think that's bad protocol. I think, you know, both of these, neither of these, I don't have any objection to either of these activities, they both sound fine, I don't want to have a fight about, you know, $45,000, but I do think that this process is problematic. Thank you.
Another job for the Procedures Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was about to ask about that.
When you have a clear process, you know, people know how you do that. So I will assign that under the other process procedures, so you all will have quite a lot to consider and think about, and we know you all would do that with all due diligence. Is there any other matter?
I just want to make sure that we're clear that the city manager has authorization to move forward.
I was going to ask about timeline, like, when is the camp starting, when is the conference?
It would start as soon as school gets out, and, like, they're ready to move, which is why it's a matter of timing, yeah.
Oh, wow, I didn't realize I get that. Okay, so clear direction is a thumbs up for the city manager to figure out what sponsorship is at an appropriate amount for that conference. She needs some kind of direction. So this, this three down.
The manager can make it work, that I'm okay, I...
If she could, and that's...
You can make it work, but I would say we don't do it this way.
In it, okay. I do want to thank Mr. Walker, while he's here, for a very fine bimby. We all had a great time on last Saturday out there, and so just wanted to make note that he's here today and wanted to tell he and his staff, congratulations on a great bimby. That's when you, I did have a couple of questions about how folk get the hometown award, so they want to make sure that we, you know, people want to know if they can nominate or not nominate, and when you have us presenting, please let everybody be a part, because I'm getting questions from other people on the council, well, you know, I didn't get a chance, can I come up on stage? So when you're giving out those kind of assignments, please spread it around to all your elected officials so they have a chance to get on that stage and present some stuff too, okay? All right, I'll give up my spot for opening, and then Mayor Protem can give up some of the time on presentations to other council, so just spread that around. All right, y'all, we are now adjourned at 4:24 on 6/8/2023. Bull City Strong.